Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
He's muted.
We have you muted, James.
Hey.
I'm here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our topic tonight is a kind of the next iteration of our 2024 budget discussion. So I'm going to ask Lisa to kind of take us through the paperwork that we've got on our, on the Ds here with some updates from our last discussion. So Lisa?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to start with the first packet and let me open this up for those in attendance. So I'm starting here with what's known as the L2. And this is the form that we submit to the county to levy our property taxes every year. And I just wanted to go over a little bit how that form works and how we come up with those numbers. Really, the county census is formed and we have a tab where we drop in our numbers and then everything automatically populates with rates and calculations. So we'll start up here at the very top with our highest number from last year, 4.9 million. And that's what we levied last year, including everything. We can add the 3%, which is our allowable amount. And then we have a personal property amount. And again, all these numbers come from the county. And we also have our net taxable value. And this really, that number becomes the denominator when calculating rates and levies. So you'll see here the rate 0.0019. That's going to be the amount that is used to then calculate our new construction amount. We just received updated numbers. The first time we had our budget numbers, we were in more of the 21 million range for new construction. We just received updated numbers from the county. We're up to almost 40 million. I won't have an actual solidified final number till the end of July, but I don't really expect any changes at this point. So from that 39 million, we will generate 75,000 in additional tax levy that we can calculate. We had a small amount of personal property annexed. I'm actually unsure where that came from, but it generated a dollar in additional revenue. So from there, we calculate our tax amount. And then there are some additional items. There's agricultural equipment replacement money. There's personal property replacement money. A few years ago, the county increased the amount of exemption for personal property, and that, of course, impacted the cities. And so they've been making up that amount over the years. The first one was in 2013, and they just have another personal tax replacement money in 2020. So that totals about 61,000. Down at the bottom, you'll see 156,580. That is our forgone property tax. Those are amounts that we did not levy in the past. When we don't levy a property tax, we have the option of putting that into what they call a forgone pot. So if we wanted to draw out that money, we would have to have a specific purpose. We would have to hold a public hearing and we would have a resolution. At this time for this year, we don't anticipate pulling any of that money out, but it does continue to sit there and roll, subject to any changes that would be taken at the legislative level.
Lisa, just from my education, the reason we forego that is?
It's very unusual for us. Some jurisdictions have more forgone, like I know Boise is projecting a 2% increase in their property tax rather than the full three. So they can set that other 1% aside. This really came out of some COVID funding when we had replacement money from the federal government to help reduce property taxes. So it caused us to to not take our full 3%.
Oh, because we got supplemented somewhere else?
Correct. So that 156 is sitting aside.
Kind of a one time.
Kind of a one time thing. So that amount is how we calculate our property tax. And then the county will submit all this to the county. They will come up with our levy rate, and that's what will show up on the residents' tax statements and how we collect our funds. So now we'll kind of roll into the actual general fund.
Any questions on the L2? It's, it's a been doing them for years.
Yeah, it really is a lot of, a lot of work. You drop in some numbers and some new numbers populate.
It's the system. So.
I have one question. Given the construction that we've got, how does that compare to last year, just curious?
A little bit higher. We were in around the $20 million range last year, so about doubled to 40 million. And of course, we're anticipating that next year's levy will see a larger number in that new construction. So, yeah. The next, we'll jump to the general fund itself. The top sheet is just a roll-up summary of what we call the fund balance. And we started fiscal year '23 with a little over 4 million. We anticipate that we will reduce that amount by just a little over 57,000 this year and carry into the beginning of 2024 a little over $4 million fund balance. So we're staying pretty stagnant for 2023. And then the next section, that's really how we project to end 2024. We, of course, have to have a balanced budget. And from an operational standpoint, our revenues and expenses, we are at a zero balance budget. We then anticipate drawing $250,000 from that fund balance as a unique expense, 250 for the flood study. So we kind of like to break those out so that we show, from an operational standpoint, we are able to meet our expenses with the revenues projected. Ooh, that's very. The next page is again, it's a summary of the detail that we're going to see. And again, just shows it broken down between the different departments, mayor and council, law enforcement, revenue and expenses. And those numbers then correlate to the numbers on the fund balance page. So then we'll kind of get into the meat of it here. We're really our line item budget. We'll start with the mayor and council. Again, our property tax revenue, we do anticipate the 3% and the new construction. Being mindful that we are capped at a total of 8% growth on our property taxes. And should our new construction, I've run the numbers, if we're in around the 250 million range for new construction, we'll start to bump up against that 8%. The state liquor revenues are staying pretty flat. We actually, some of the numbers last year were a little bit higher, and we get those numbers from AIC. And I know they look at trends and they look at history, but obviously some things can change. And sometimes those numbers, this is one of the first years I've seen where the projections for 2023 from AIC were a little high. So we kind of, we looked at those numbers and were a little bit conservative with those, but we expect the state liquor to stay pretty flat with what we expect to bring in for 2023. It's a reduction from what we budgeted last year of about $40,000. But from what we actually will bring in this year, we're going to keep that number pretty flat. Same thing with the sales tax, the revenue sharing from the state. We are using the AIC number of 1.5 million, which is, as you can see, about 16,000 less. And every year since I've been here, that number's always gone up. So I believe they're seeing maybe some trends and maybe a little pulling back on spending. We're still waiting on any changes, and the mayor may address this, in the sales tax revenue that has been sequestered by the state from online sales. A lot of, a lot of that, I know they're still trying to decide how to use.
Yeah, the state's capturing it for other reasons, frankly.
Yeah.
And we're seeing more and more companies which sales of which accrued to the internet pot. But they've reached the threshold or they have a presence in the state somewhere, and that's going back into the general revenue sharing pot that we get. So we're seeing some changes in the gross amount of internet sales relative to what it's, what it's been as far as percentage of the total. So.
And that will be an interesting number to watch going forward. I mean, a lot of brick and mortar stores are closing, which leaves people with an online option. That's it. So.
So.
The, we'll jump to interest, interest income. Again, we're, we're seeing the benefit of the higher interest rates. We did project a lower number based on the 2023 year-end estimate. We will be spending some money this year that we haven't spent this year. We've got quite a few million, which we come to the enterprise fund. You'll see a lot of money going out. So that money we have sitting in the bank is going to start to decrease. So interest rates we're anticipating will stay where they are. If they came down, we're keeping that number, what I would call conservative. And then the franchise fees, those are for the most part very fixed. They're based on, they're all based on revenue of the agency with the exception of.
Lisa, can we go back to the interest on investments?
Yes.
A little further. In the last 12, 16 months, maybe 18 months, we've had everything on our money that we have in the local government investment pool at a fraction of 1% up to currently, it's a little over 4.8%. So we're being a little careful about taking what we're getting this month and trying to project that out over the next fiscal year because things can change both ways rapidly as we've seen just in the last 18 months. So that's why that number is a little conservative. If everything was like the addition we got in the last statement, then we'd have a higher number. But we're afraid to bet farm on that, so to speak. So there's a lot of volatility in what I would call the last 18-month cycle.
Thanks. So again, those franchise fees, they stay fairly consistent. You know, you'll notice Intermountain Gas, that's one that seems to fluctuate quite a bit, and a lot of that is just dependent upon how cold the winter is, because that is a percentage of the revenues. Same with Idaho Power, TDS. Republic Services is a fixed amount, and that's written into our contract.
How is, Lisa, TDS, since it's being new, right? Is there, I know in our name, but they're finally built out after however many years. And so I see trucks, people hooking up to them. Are they done in Garden City, Collin yet? Or we, so that number should go up, I guess, as they keep building up?
Yeah, and the mayor comes like, I think at this point, they're pulling back and they're starting to tie in a lot of services. So now it's based on revenue.
Right.
People are finally hooking up to it.
And interestingly enough, we're actually seeing spark light cable ones. Friend by feet coming down.
Yeah, yeah.
It's basically a swap, right?
Yeah, exactly. We went up in one and down in another. So staying actually fairly stagnant. Moving on to the PD revenues. Their grant revenue, those are usually specific grants that they get year after year. They may be for different things, but a lot of them come from the Office of Highway Safety or Department of Justice. We are no longer dedicating an officer to the marshal services. We were getting reimbursed for that. That went away. We do have a grant in there for the STEP program. Fines and forfeitures, again, we're leaving pretty flat. We're seeing, getting fairly consistent. Everything else, the only other one is the outside services revenue. So this is monies that we charge to an organization, for example, the fair, the fairgrounds. And that's part of the reason this has gone down. We will no longer be providing the level of support to the fair that we were in the past and getting reimbursed for. We do provide services to the Boise Music Festival, and they reimburse us. And then the Revolution Concert House, we have provided in the past, but I know some of that's going away. So we do have a lower number there. We do have the ARPA money for police cars one more time in fiscal '24. This will be the last of that money. The library, just a note in their grant, and you'll see a corresponding expense. There's an extra $90,000 in their grant revenue. They have applied for a grant to build a study room.
Let's do a pause so Teresa can.
Sorry.
That's right. We're under the sheet with the yellow highlights.
Okay.
And Lisa can go over that with you later. So move that to the side. That's our form we fill out. And then we're, Bill, help her find it.
So we're just got done with this page.
Okay.
And so we're going on to this page.
So we're going through departmental revenues. General fund. Okay.
On the right page, Lisa.
All right. So the grant that the library has applied for, again, you'll see a corresponding expense when we get to the expense line items. If they don't receive that grant, then they won't build the study room. So either way, it's a wash. But we like to budget for those items when they're going after them. And we all know how successful the library has been at getting grants. And that way, we've appropriated the money should it happen. You'll notice a decrease. Their donations just from general citizens that usually come in usually around Christmas time, just it's down a little bit this year. And so they're not anticipating as much next year. They are expecting a lower amount of revenue from the friends. And that's the, a lot of the library book sales that you see out here, just they're anticipating having a little less money. And corresponding, we have an increase from the foundation. So for whatever reason, the monies have shifted a little bit in the library. And again, they're, they're meeting budget on their miscellaneous fees. So we've brought that number up a little bit, exceeding their budget. And then the Bells program is 100% funded by the foundation, so it's always a wash to the bottom line. And we'll go down to the next section, dog licenses. Business licenses, we're seeing a reduction for a couple of years. We had the farmer's market down at 34th Street, and all of those vendors had to pull licenses. And so we're noticing a bit of a decline because there's no longer market. And we're seeing some of the breweries and wineries, they still have a food truck, but they're not having the events that they were having in the past. So some of that may be due to the fact that it's just hard to get people at these events, not the, not the customers, but the vendors. There's so much competition for food trucks at different events. And if you've got a large event, it's easier to get somebody there than to have a single truck, you know, at a brewery on a Thursday night. So. And then we have our our parks and facilities. So the, I'm sorry, the intergovernmental revenue from the urban renewal, that's that's a project specific. So if we have a project, we will receive funding if not. And then we won't have, we'll have just a little bit of ARPA money that will flow into next year for facility maintenance. Really, that'll be, that will use up the rest of the ARPA money with the exception of the 2 million that we are holding for a sewer project, which we'll get to in the enterprise budget. So unless there's any questions on revenue, I'll jump to the expenses.
So can you explain the URA again, Lisa? So in '23, you had 656. And so I know it's project-based, so do not, I mean, I'm sure they're going to give us money for projects. So is it just until it's given, we don't write it in?
Right. So we're, well, so we're still waiting to work with Urban Renewal and Collin on what projects might be. And those are as zero net effect to the bottom line. So them not being in here won't change
Okay.
the, again, the balanced budget. But we want to make sure we appropriate those. And so as we work through those projects, we will build those in once we know. And once we have a concur from the Urban Renewal Board.
Thank you.
Expenses, really, the one of the changes, and talk to mayor about that. So just a little backstory, when we hired Susanna, the anticipation was she would work for me, helping with some finance stuff and, and for the mayor, because at the time, this was kind of a different position. We weren't sure how we were going to keep her busy working for just the mayor. And as it has turned out, we have no trouble keeping her busy. So just for, just to make it an actual representation of the departments, we've moved Susanna into the mayor and council's budget from Treasury. Down into the operations, we had some special projects under professional services. Those are no longer needed. And the, just a little bit of the change in a few line items, but nothing too dramatic. And our standard, we do have our final number from ICrimp for our property and liability insurance.
So let's remind everybody what dues and memberships we pay.
So, yes.
We can remember them all.
So we have Ada County Emergency Management. We have Compass. We have Treasury Rally Partnership, Boise Valley Economic Partnership, AIC, the
Valley Ride.
Valley Ride, Chamber of Commerce, Garden City Chamber. I think that's about them, the seven. So that's what makes up, yes, that 20, 20, almost 30,000 in dues and memberships.
We do invest in Allenbaugh House, but we're using as a reminder the opioid money that we get. That money comes with strings. You have to have a treatment program in place to accept that money. If you don't have one, then you can cert, you can pass it through to somebody that does. So we pass ours through to Allenbaugh House. So, so you'll see in the check runs once in a while checked to Allenbaugh House. And that's, that's what that is.
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
What was your comments about professional services?
So in 2023, we had built in money under professional services for some code amendments and code, working on the code. Charlie has been able to absorb a lot of that through his interns. You'll actually know. You'll, you'll notice when we get to his budget, he's a little over budget on his intern line item. But from, from an accounting standpoint, I know, we know, and I'm conveying to you that, that that, his money is coming out of the savings from that line item for professional services. Our original intent was to hire a consultant. But we've been able to deal with a lot of it in-house, and Jenna and her team, a lot of that Title VIII fell to their shoulders. And so.
Yeah.
Thank you. So law enforcement personnel, you might notice something unique, that the salary line item has actually a little bit lower number than last year. And the way we budget for personnel for law enforcement is officer by officer. And when we did the 2023 budget, we had some vacancies that, at the time, you don't know what they're going to be filled with. Is it a recruit? Is it a PO4? We always budget on the high side. We budgeted a PO4 for a couple of different positions in 2023. So we had more money in the officer line item for personnel last year. We did again this year. We go line by line, but this time we had more knowns. We knew the officers that we have, the positions, and we really had at that time, one position when we did these numbers that was vacant, and we didn't know at the time what was going to be filling that. So I'll say, I'll say that we were a little over budgeted last year, but that's really to be cautious, because we have no idea. If we bring in a lateral at a PO4 and we only budgeted for a recruit, that could, that could really hit us on the budget side. So.
And is the overtime because we're a few officers, so the existing officers have to work a little bit more?
Well, and I might let Corey.
Yes, or no, sure.
Thank you.
Lisa, is it possible to get Acting Chief Stanbar to move to a mic for that comment?
Yes, he's on his way.
Sorry, I should have done that. Sometimes the work sessions are tended to be less formal, but if they're so informal, you can't hear them. That doesn't work. So my apologies.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that. Yeah, so right now, our overtime is trending high. Not only are we short three actual persons that we are attempting to hire right now, but we have two on light duty. We do have one detective that's been TD-wide out of detectives back to patrol for almost a year to help fill that. It's just a matter, right now, we're not in crisis mode, but just in order to keep the streets staffed appropriately, we are having to pay a little bit more overtime than we normally do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to note, when we do calculate the overtime, again, we go, we go officer by officer. I'm able to pull a history on what they worked prior year. So we will start there as a basis, but then we'll discuss, the law enforcement staff will discuss, well, yes, they did that last year, but now they're in this. So we, I mean, I want to say we get down beyond the weeds when we do the payroll for PD. We get down to to some pretty specific numbers. So that's why you see that overtime a little bit higher. Healthcare, we had originally budgeted 10% because at the time, we didn't know when we did the last budget meeting. We received some good news on that. Triple IA will be implementing a 6.1% increase. So that has factored in to these numbers. And again, a lot of the corresponding numbers, I will point out with Percy, you'll notice again, some unusual, that you'll see that number going down for civilian. There's two things going on, actually, not this paycheck, but the next paycheck. The general members will notice a reduction in their Percy contribution. Percy has made the decision to reallocate or redistribute who's paying what amount into the fund. The general members will go from 7.16% to 6.81%. Correspondingly, the city's contribution will go from 11.94 to 11.18. The PD's numbers are going to go up. They did, in their analysis, right, wrong, or indifferent, I don't have an opinion, but from their analysis, they, their payouts felt were a little more law enforcement or first responder heavy versus general members. So they have reallocated that. They also have anticipated then to do another increase in July of 2024. So that number's factored in here. So we have nine months at the current rate and possibly three months at an increased rate for July, August, and September of next fiscal year. So there is a chance they won't implement that increase. Again, they have a very strict process they have to go through, through the legislature to ask for an increase. They can defer that increase. They can completely cancel it, or they can implement it. But that the schedule they gave when they did this change was some increases over the next three to four years. So all that's been factored in. And then we have our code enforcement and animal control division. And again, from an operational standpoint, there's, there's not a lot of changes for the police department. We will be increasing their bandwidth for their internet service. And then we received notification from Idaho Power to expect around a 14% increase for commercial properties. And then Intermountain Gas, we also saw. And we also have, again, and Mayor can talk a little bit. He did talk about our animal control service contract. We're still waiting on a number from the Humane Society. So at this point, we have a holding spot of 50,000 just to see where that might come in. That's really the major change in that division. Again, going to the library, most of the payrolls, status quo. And then these library numbers do come directly from the library director and her board. She runs her budget through them. And then the city has the option of, you know, taking those suggestions, modifying those suggestions, or, you know, for whatever works. Uh, she does have thirteen thousand in for a new server. Uh, their servers are very expensive. And they usually run about five to seven years. And we've got that ninety thousand in there for the study room, and again, if, if the grant's not awarded, that won't happen. And then we have the Bells for Books, which again is a hundred percent funded by the foundation. Uh, Legal Department, I know Mayor talked a little bit also about the contract with the county for prosecution services. We are seeing a. Fairly good increase there. In. In serve, in our, um. Contract. And really that's based on the, the numbers and the calls or the level of service that we're receiving from the county.
Any questions on that one? Basically, we had a static contract for three years while they gathered numbers. Uh, and. Um, the contract cities, that's Kuna Star Eagle. Are calculated. Along with Garden City. As the. Percentage of various kinds of prosecution for misdemeanor and infraction. And their, their cost model. Prosecutor's Office, uh, for those four cities. Is, is split up by the loading each city provides or the percentage the city provides to the total. Obligation and of course. Uh, that's reflected in the contract numbers, so.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, so where are. We, there was a discussion, I'm sorry to. I don't mean to drag everybody down this path, but. It might be a real quick. Uh, we were looking at leveraging the county's contract with the Humane Society and then that reverse, right, and. And now we're, you've solicited from them an updated quote or proposal and they have not. Come back with that number yet.
Right, what happened was we had a, uh, actually our first meeting with Humane Society was in front of the three county commissioners. As it, as it turned out. And that was followed by a subsequent meeting that, uh, uh, former Chief Allen and I had with, uh. Uh, Jeff Rosen. Rosenthal, same thing, yeah, Rosenthal and. Their chief financial officer. And, uh, in the past, the Humane Society, it was an all or nothing arrangement with the contract. Everybody had the same contracts, same services. We argued that. Uh, we, we need a hybrid. We, we really don't want an animal control contract. We want a drop off capability at the Humane Society. And continue the animal control here because of the uniqueness of Garden City, four square miles, uh, we have our own kennel, we can hold, we can deliver up there as needed. Uh, the numbers of animals that we're picking up are. Are. Drastically lower than. What the Humane Society had previously estimated. So, uh, they had changed their. Uh, policy and we're willing to consider a hybrid agreement. So we're waiting for that and it's about time for me to follow up, uh, because I asked for it by the middle of July and we're. We're pretty much there, so. Uh, that's something that Lieutenant Soundba and I will be. Will be dealing with, uh. So we just put a block number in there anticipating. Uh, that that would. Uh, allow us to keep our current program with, uh. Uh, the actual animal control officer that works for us and maintain our current pro- protocol and would just have a drop off for the. For the dogs and it would pick up the cats. So, uh, it would allow. The city to take advantage of the same protocol every, everyone else in the county has as it relates to free roaming cats.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. I'm glad I got to explain that. So more to come. I think. We hear from.
So, um, and so in the Treasury clerk, you to, you to Treasury clerk utility billing, you'll notice the salaries down. That's the transfer of Susanna to the mayor's budget. Again, got, uh, uh, increase the professional services line item a little bit, uh, that's going to be based on the need for additional codification. As we do all of these code amendments. We then have to send them off to the codifier and, and that fee. Rolls through this department. And information technology, uh, we're going to have some one-time purchases. The P D will need a new server, um, will need a network switch. I'm saying he's like, I know exactly what they are. And a firewall, and these all came through Colin, uh, I T staff recommendations and our, our third party Orion does watch our hardware needs. And makes recommendations, so we'll see some increased costs there. These again are one time, a lot of these items will last five to seven years.
Lisa?
Yes.
I, uh, the script that I can see is, uh, too small for me to read is, does this I T, uh. Segment include the, uh, law enforcement line item for the, um. I'm going to use the wrong word here, um. The software package that we, um. We have a partnership, generous partnership with the city of Meridian, uh, does that, is that included in, in this? Or is that part of the law enforcement budget?
Yeah, uh. And Soundba is going to address it.
Uh, Mayor and Council know that is part of our professional services line item. Uh, then that line, we'll pay for Central Square, which we currently still have to use. And then very minimal cost from Meridian, they've been very generous about that. We're still in the process of. Trying to transfer our, some of our data over and so, no, that's not included in this particular line item for I T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and finally, our parks facility and streetlight division. You'll see our building, uh, where we are making some improvements in fiscal year twenty twenty-three outside of the budget. To take advantage of the additional interest income that we've received. That's really where the offset's coming from. We do have some security system updates that would be made to the building and anticipate two H V A C units being replaced. Uh, as we get down to some of the larger items. Maintenance grounds. Again, some of these items are placeholders. We're not exactly sure if they will take place, but at this time we have anticipated. That the city would contribute twenty thousand dollars towards the fifty-second street bridge if. The group that's working towards making that happen is able to come up with funding, uh, they did need the city's commitment to apply for the grant. Uh, fifteen thousand for, it should say chind and drainage. Um, and then we set aside a certain amount each year for. Green belt maintenance and we, we kind of, a green belt replacement, I should say. We go in and we either replace a section with concrete. Or a larger section with blacktop because the concrete, uh, prices have been so high, so we'd like to try and set a certain amount aside each year. For that project, if we have the funds, we, we do kind of wait a little bit to see how revenues come in because that is an area that we could cut if we had to, so. And again, we will build in the urban renewal projects as we get those. And really, uh, again, we have the fourteen percent increase built in for Idaho Power for streetlights. So that's the general fund. Unless there's any questions, I'll move on.
Lisa, uh, where? Where's the budget for flood plain study?
So actually, right, we're, we're actually on that line right there, so that, oh, yeah, so we have two hundred and fifty thousand. Budgeted for next year. Uh, it's under FEMA flood study.
Yeah, that's, that's a placeholder. It's absolutely. We're waiting to hear back on that, uh, so. Uh, we'll.
See how it pans out.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Now, we're waiting to hear back from them.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, I will move on to then the, the Development Services Fund. Be a separate packet there.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we're, we're right in the middle of a meeting and. And everyone on the internet's listening to your greeting, so I'm glad you're all. Uh, able to greet each other, but. Let's, let's move on.
All right, so the Development Services Fund, uh, again, that's based off of fees for the building and planning and zoning department. I work with Jenna and she's reviewed the projects that are in the pipeline and we feel comfortable with these numbers. As you can see, we've already exceeded our revenues for building permits for twenty twenty-three. We're going to keep that amount stagnant for thirty. And then we really divide that personnel into building and planning and zoning functions and currently there's, uh, six staff members. Under that department. We did move some money into the Development Services Fund this year, seventy thousand. We know there's more code updates and specific to Title Eight. And we will need a consultant at some point. There, there comes a time with land use where there's only so much staff can do. And you need someone who's more of an expert in land use, so we built about seventy thousand in there to. To deal with some of the code rewrites that we anticipate for next year. And, uh, that one's pretty straightforward, so unless there's any questions on development services, I'll. Move on to the Enterprise Fund.
Uh, I do have a question. Do, should we be considering adjusting the, the personnel and the budget for personnel? At what point do you? Do we believe we'll need to add more staff to that department?
Well, we're managing at the moment, um. We're, we're going to have a temporary, um. Gap in our staffing there, um. We have, uh, contractual arrangements with companies that can. Process applications, you know, if we need them on call. Uh, and. If we get to that. Or we really think we're going to need another person for longer term. Uh, I'm sure Jenna is going to let me know, but. One of the things that we're looking at internally is, uh, and this is all a little speculative, I think we're. We're just rounding the top of the hill of a spike. Uh, we've had, uh. Several very large projects over the last. Two and a half years. Uh, and we're. As we'll see later on our agenda, we're starting perhaps to get back to some. Projects that are. More customary that. We can handle, uh, internally, but. But we have a backup plan if we get, if we're getting overrun. But Jenna hasn't come to me and said, I, I have enough to do to have another full-time person, so if she does, then we'll deal with it then.
So that answered, uh, another question that I had regarding the volume. And have we peaked or? Do we have a forecast of applicants coming in, in twenty-four?
Yeah, we know we have, uh, you know, we know we're going to see more around the boardwalk area, um. Uh, you know, we had a decision last time that was, uh, that is starting the motion on another large project. There'll still be the design review function and the individual pieces of that that will have to come back before the council on that. That is that Jenna, you come and add to the discussion, uh.
So what am I? Another question is if something were to happen with the fairgrounds. Would we be prepared? I, and I don't anticipate anything will in twenty-four. I'm hopeful, but in the event that something it did shake loose there. Would we be prepared? To handle another large project with. That would be very time consuming.
Yeah. Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, and members of the council, um, to answer the question on have we peaked? We've certainly seen a slowing of entitlements. Um, however, as the entitlements go through, then you, you get the building permit side of things. And so the building permit side of things hasn't necessarily slowed down. Um, but we have seen some slowing of the entitlements as the, the mayor alluded to, um. And as the mayor also mentioned, we do have a couple of, uh, contracts that are set up. And so we do have a contract with Safe Built for Planning. Efforts, um, in addition to the, a temporary, um, contract that we have with Kimberly Horn, uh, currently. That could potentially be expanded upon. Um, we, to date, we haven't used that safe built planning side. Um. As a contracted service, it, um, we've been doing that all in-house to date. Uh, but we do have a contract that we could rely on while we look for solutions should the fairgrounds. Come through and we do have, um, two services for building permits. That's the safe built contractors. As well as, uh, with a Doppel through the state of Idaho.
One other thing on the fairgrounds, that's not going to sneak up on us.
Yeah.
That's going to be a, a very, uh, deliberate. Process that's going to take some time, so, um. Uh, it's a lot of hoops to jump in when the, when you're looking at public property, yeah. Improvements, uh. So. Uh, we'll get a little glimpse of what's going to happen maybe, uh, through their efforts as they develop the racetrack area into a, a big park, but.
All right, we will move to the Enterprise Fund. And the Enterprise Fund is comprised of water sewer and our, uh, trash sanitation contract with Republic Services. So this again is kind of a summary sheet, uh, this top page, so I'll jump right to the. Line items. So looking at, at this point, a budgeted, uh, eight percent increase for water. Everything kind of trending off of that, keeping most of the revenues again fairly stagnant. A lot of these are just unknowns. The capital. Fees with for fire services and water connections, those are again dependent not only on projects, but. When a project decides to move forward and, and hold their permits. Again, our personnel, uh, staying fairly stagnant there with our number of F T Es. We do have, um. Now, again, I might like Colin explain these acronyms, so we have an increase of ten thousand dollars for the U C M R testing. And then we have, I broke out a specific line item for what we're calling operating equipment. These are not items that you capitalize, but they are significant dollar amounts. Uh, again, I'll let him talk about the P C Ls, M X U meters, those I do know, those are the ones that the staff are able to read automatically, radio read. Versus having to manually read, and then we do replace a certain number of fire hydrants every year. Um, I'll let Colin finish if you need, if anybody has questions on those, but those are just specific items that have come up. Our professional and services line item has decreased. We had a specific project for, uh. A water mod model, uh, water modeling of which half was funded by D E Q. That was a one-time expense under professional services. And everything else will trend out, uh, based on actuals, the increase in electricity. Um, here's where we're going to start to see some cash outflows in the capital for water. We anticipate purchasing a new vehicle next year. Uh, well, twelve, we're showing a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar rehab. And I'll show the capital project sheet here in just a moment, once we go through the numbers, but we have. The connection at Adam Street, we're going to see a lot of activity on Adam Street, uh, involving both Boise City and Garden City. Construction wise, and then Forty-Fifth Street, uh, some additional. And I'll jump to sewer. One of the things we've been looking at and talking about at our last meeting is. Uh, looking at the sewer rates and beginning to look at those increases based on usage. We know that. A commercial user, a certain commercial user specifically. a commercial user, a certain commercial user specifically is putting more vol- more volume and more waste into the sewer system that causes the increased cost from our, uh, processor at Boise City. So this year we're looking at the residential rate increase versus a commercial rate increase. And I did look at Boise's numbers. And we'll continue to look at that. When you get into their higher strength categories, we're still quite a bit lower than what Boise is charging their commercial users. So we'll begin to kind of true up some of those numbers and make sure that the people that are using the system the most are paying their fair share. We will uh, we anticipate in what Colin has already worked out with urban renewal, about a million dollars towards the urban renewal projects for sewer. And then we do anticipate the ARPA funding flow, ARPA funding flowing through this year. And personnel is very similar to what we saw in the other departments. Uh, there's some additional DEQ testing that will be required. We have twenty thousand in there for that. And then getting into the sewer projects, that's where we're going to see the, our, our big projects. Again, we have another vehicle. Three point five million will be going into Adams Street for the sewer line. And this is a project that's in conjunction with Boise City. Um, so two million of that will be funded by ARPA. And then another two hundred thousand on Forty Third Street, and then the urban renewal projects. I will jump to that capital project really quick here. So that's kind of the colorful sheet with some blue and red on it. So we've divided the projects into, uh, what their priority is and whether they're city funded, urban renewal funded, or in this case, we have the one ARPA funding. As you can see Colin and his staff, this is a, this is a fluid document. They go through it every year. Uh, these numbers are really best guessed. They're not hard engineered numbers. Uh, they're, they're what they think they will be. And just in talking with Boise City, lots of these costs are coming in even higher than what they anticipated. So we will be waiting. But these again are our best guesses. Um, and the one number I do like to point out on this sheet, if you go down to the very bottom between water and sewer, we have just under twenty million dollars in projects projected. And Colin again can talk about the timing of those, you know, obviously some of them are not imminent. There are things we will want to get done, whether it's over the next ten years, twenty years. But we always keep these projects on the horizon as we're looking at those two funds. And I'll let Colin come up and just talk a little bit about these projects and how they.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, most of the projects on the capital list are just what Lisa was mentioning. They're, they're long-term. They, they are not in dire need of repair at this time, but as time progresses, these systems get older, they're going to need some sorts, some level of repair. So we're just preparing ourselves for that. Um, we don't expect there to be money for these projects in the next five years or ten years, but down the road, we need to keep these in mind for you subsequent, uh, mayors, council members, we keep these lists going. Uh, the, uh, UCMRs that came up in the water, and I know we're running short on time. Every five years, there's a battery of tests that go out on water systems that's it's not recommended, it's mandated by, by EPA that we run these tests on our system. So if you're a, if you're a system under ten thousand population, federal government pays for it. If you're a system over ten thousand people, the city pays for it. And that's where we get hooked, we kind of get hooked on that one because we're barely over. So the complete funding is on us. So all the testing and it's, it gets quite expensive. We have to send them out either Florida or California for the testing. They own, they're the only places that have labs that, uh, are qualified to take, do these tests for us. And they, they look for an entire battery of things, the hundreds of things they sample for. Um, there was a EPA or a, um, a DEQ about twenty thousand bucks that was in the sewer. That, that is in place because the state of Idaho has primacy on this. And you have to fund it somehow. So that's how they decided how they're going to fund it. It's, uh, a dollar seventy-four per EDU. And it runs roughly about seventeen or eighteen thousand bucks a year. So that will fall on us to, uh, to pay for that. So. Um, some of the other things, the, uh, the biggest project is like Lisa mentioned. And I'm just giving you two seconds of background on this. The Adams Project is, uh, probably the biggest project that this city has ever done or will ever do. It's, there's a brand new forty-eight inch trunk line going down Adams from Forty Third. Excuse me, down to Creation. And this is in conjunction with the, uh, city of Boise. And we're paring, we're paying for our fair share of it, which is still a fair amount of money. So we'll take all the ARPA funds plus a little bit that we've kind of saved up for this project. So that, that will be, that will be a big one and you will probably get a lot of phone calls from your constituents regarding Adams, because it will be, it'll be a mess for a while. So. But that, that will come up next year. That's going to happen in fiscal twenty-four.
That obstruction.
Yes, it will. Correct. Right. So I, I'm, I'll be here for any questions if you have anything like.
Will it be completed within the year?
That's a good question.
The guest estimate right now.
It should, it should. Yeah, I would, I would estimate this to take probably six months, six to eight months if everything goes well. Plus we're tying in all the water lines into our new water main on Adams. So it actually works pretty well for us. But, uh, it, it'll be a long task, a long project, but when it's done, it will be fantastic. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that, uh, includes the informational item on the work session. Again, uh, questions? Any specific questions? Feel free to contact, uh, Lisa anytime. Uh, if you want a little more background. And we'll get it, we'll get it to you. Uh, Counsel, are we good to go? Anybody need to stop for a moment?
I need a moment.
Oh, okay.
Apologize.
A moment here or a moment away from the break a moment. Yeah, we'll just call a short recess. Uh, sorry for those of you that just came in. We're running just a little behind. Uh, we had a budget workshop ahead of this and ran a little bit over, so. We'll, uh, we'll convene the council meeting in about five or six minutes. All right, thank you, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. Uh, it's Monday, July tenth, twenty twenty-three. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting or clerk certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Their color roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Sure.
Councilmember Jorgensen. Here, Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thanks. You join me in the Fledge of Allegiance? Item D is changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing another clerk color roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen. Yes. Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, special business. Uh, authorized me to reappoint Carrie Ferguson to the library, as a library board trustee for a five-year term.
Miss. I was waiting for Councilmember Heller since he's very close to the one very far.
I'm sorry, I was reading. Mr. Mayor, I'd move we accept that appointment.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now the clerk color roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to item G, item G one, approval of the SAP FY twenty twenty-three zero 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 one findings of fact, conclusions of law and decision document. Uh, counsel, this is the item that, uh, you dealt with, uh, uh, last meeting. Mr. Waddams, when you're ready, why don't we do a little, uh, preamble as he's getting ready to do that, counsel? Uh, you discussed and deliberated on, on the decision document last time, uh, you eliminated an item and you added an item. And, uh, take it from there, Mr. Waddams.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Three, three things kind of for the preamble today. First, um, you know, a question came up whether the, the wording in the proposed decision document accurately reflected what happened last time. Uh, I would submit it does. Uh, ultimately that's up for the council though. If it's the council's document now where staff is taking that document from what we've drafted and we're giving it to the council, we'll see if it's what the council feels that it did last time. So, um, if somebody's not happy with that, though, of course, they could file a request for reconsideration within fourteen days of the approval of the written decision document. So uh, if you, if you approve the decision document, some iteration tonight, it could come back in a couple of weeks or a month or so on a request for reconsideration, just so everybody's mindful of that. If you do, if the council does, uh, approve that written decision tonight, then the, the time for a request for reconsideration would begin, uh, starting tonight. So the shot clock would start on that. Uh, second thing is, uh, I, it was brought to my attention this afternoon that somebody put a flyer on Russ Heller's door, Councilmember Russ Heller's door, maybe yesterday. Uh, it looks like it was maybe pinned by Mr. Livingston, although I, I have no idea if Mr. Livingston put it there or not. In any event, uh, because we saw have a pending application. Uh, I just thought maybe at some point in time, Councilmember Heller could just verify that that flyer, that he's not considering that flyer in his decision process.
Uh, now.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Waddams, uh, no, I have not. Uh, I, and I, I have no, I have no idea who put, put it on the door and I have no objection to somebody sharing, uh, a notice with me that way. Um, I, I'll share one, one, uh, idea from the, uh, from the flyer was to thank the city council for, uh, its, um, deliberations and, um, uh, our action taken. Or I'll, I'll stick to deliberations taken at our last council meeting.
Thank you.
This.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize for interrupting Mr. Waddams in transparency. I also received a copy of the flyer.
And, uh, Councilmember Jorgensen, you're not considering that flyer in your decision-making process.
That is correct.
Thank you. Just for the record, we could, you know, making everything transparent. Finally.
Mr. Waddams.
Oh, yeah, Council President Page.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to also in the spirit of transparency, uh, state that I uh, also read the letter penned, uh, I believe probably the same letter penned by Mr. Livingston. Um, and, uh, and I did not give it additional consideration that, uh, would impact this, uh, decision document before us tonight.
Thank you, Council President and Mayor. Um, the last thing I wanted to just say is there's a PDF of the, uh, draft proposed decision document that's in front of you. The, the content is exactly the same as it was in the packet that was, went out last week. Only thing that changed was there were some formatting things, you know, making sure the formatting was right. A, B goes after A and C goes after B, so on and so forth. But the content was not changed, uh, in any way from what's in the packet. Um, I think that's the preamble. So, Mr. Mayor, uh, my memorandum is, it starts on page twenty-nine of the council packet. It just says that there was a verbal decision two weeks ago and we're just here to, uh, firm that up in the written decision document that needs a reasoned, uh, statement or reason statements in there. Uh, I do say in my memo that the general condition number nine, that specifies that the time for a request for reconsideration, that starts when the written decision is approved. Um, and then after that, in your packet, starting on page thirty, is the proposed findings of fact, conclusions of law and decision. Uh, I do know that Ms. Thornborough, uh, drafted this. And I could tell the council that the changes that were put in after the last meeting, after the council deliberated and made a decision is on page fifty-four of your packet. It's highlighted. So what Ms. Thornborough is showing you is the highlighted wording is what was changed. And then there's some highlighted wording on page fifty-six of your packet, and that's Ms. Thornborough showing you that highlighted, uh, portion is what was added after the last council meeting. Uh, so with that, I would submit and, uh, stand for any questions. Thank you.
So the highlighted areas are in the decision document and then the subsequent ordinance.
Correct.
Uh, and then there's one item that was deleted, which was the requirement for connection. So that's no longer in the document. Okay. Okay, uh, uh, counsel, uh, the matter is properly before you. Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Um, I move that we approve the written decision document for SUBFY two zero two three dash zero zero. Hope I have the right number, two. Is that one?
One. One.
One, excuse me.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I just, uh, I, I'd just like to make a record on this, uh, decision document. Uh, and I'm looking at page fifty-four. Uh, item ten A sub A, uh, which says the master plan is conceptual, and I, I think that that's undisputed. Uh, but I just would like to make a record that um, if I, uh, have the opportunity to continue to be of service on this council when the time comes for development agreements, um, I, I for one will, will personally be a bit of a watchdog on the, uh, conceptual nature of exhibit A being very close to what was, um, agreed upon at our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing now the clerk color roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen. Yes. Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item G two, this is a public hearing. SUBFY twenty twenty-three. Uh, my two. We've got we've got two items here with the same. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I misread it, misread it. Uh, SUBFY twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one. Uh, Mod Court Town Homes. Uh, for those of you that are here just for the, uh, 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 project, the Lincoln project, uh, that matters, we're finished with that matter tonight. You're welcome to join us for the rest of the agenda if you so choose. Uh, this is a combined preliminary final plat, uh, Andrew Wheeler, uh, with Land Architects. Uh, I'm going to wait just a minute and let the room clear. And then we'll, we'll proceed. Yeah. Lisa, for clarification on the motion on the decision document, that's SAP. The number's SAP because we have an SAP and a
And an SUV.
And an SUV. Okay, sorry, that's with the same number following. Okay, just, just verifying that.
Yes.
Okay, counsel, uh, let's, let me start again. Item G two, this is a public hearing on SUBFY twenty twenty-three day zero 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 one. Mod Court Town Homes. Uh, anyone on the council need to declare a conflict on this item? Okay, let the record reflect, uh, no conflicts. Um, are you Mr. Wheeler? Mr. Wheeler, welcome to the podium. Uh, we're gone, going to, uh, allow you to, uh, present your application, uh, following your presentation, uh, Ms. Thornborough will uh, de- deliver the staff report. Uh, when that's finished, we'll open the public hearing and anyone that wishes to testify can do so at that time. Uh, and then, uh, you'll have an opportunity for the last word if there's any testimony that requires rebuttal. Fair enough. So if you would give us your name and address for the record and, uh, hold that mic where it's comfortable and close. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Andrew Wheeler, two nine two three North Arthur Circle, Boise, Idaho eight three seven zero three. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for your time today as we present the mod court townhome subdivision. We've been working on this project extensively for about a year now or over a year and have worked with design review, uh, planning staff, uh, members of the community, and we feel that we've compiled all those requirements and the various stipulations that went into that to, to produce a quality project that could be a
And then can you make that block on the right go away? There. Thank you.
Thank you. As I was saying, we've been working on this for, you know, over a year, um, have come to a solution that we feel meets a lot of the demands and requirements that the city has and wants to see the future development look like. So as we jump into it, the mod court townhomes is located in between Adams Street to the northeast and Shindon Boulevard in the southwest here. It's a one point three acre site, uh, composed, composed of two lots. To the northeast, you have existing, uh, detached manufactured homes and then as well as in the southeast as well. So these are fairly dilapidated buildings. Right for redevelopment. This site is currently vacant and it'll be a big improvement in the area. In the southeast, we have a single family lot and then buffered between existing commercial and light industrial. And then we also have across the street to the northwest, uh, detached, single family homes, some professional services as well as light industrial and commercial beyond that. So looking at the site from location of mass transit, it is located a quarter mile from a mass transit station on the northeast corner of Shindon and East Forty-Fifth Street. Uh, we are using this as part of our sustainable sustainability checklist items. And so it does provide a great opportunity for additional, uh, in addition to our surplus of parking, you know, future opportunities for mass transit and reinforcing the local area. Looking at the existing site photos, this is in the northwest corner looking south, and this is East Forty-Fifth Street here. This is across East Forty-Fifth Street looking east. And this is in the southwest corner looking east. You can see the existing manufactured housing, you know, pretty dilapidated fence on the south. And then looking north up East Forty-Fifth Street. Now we've moved into the site, uh, this is a closer view of that existing housing. And then looking north. And now looking west, uh, you can see some single family housing in the distance. There's an adjacent single family house here. Beyond that is light industrial and commercial. And this is an existing irrigation ditch that runs through the property. Now that irrigation ditch has posed a bit of a, a challenge. It runs through half of the site, uh, impeding, uh, the ability to produce an efficient development without tiling over that. So we are proposing to tile over that irrigation ditch, but maintain the same, uh, ingress and egress location. So there's no change to the flow of the irrigation waters. And we're doing that through a gravity irrigation line that's going to run to the north side of the site and then discharge here on the, the northwest corner. And looking at zoning, uh, the site is roughly in this area, right on that border of the commercial and the R three and the current zoning plan. We're proposing R three, uh, and it is zone currently is R three. So we're not proposing any zone change. Um, in the comprehensive plan, it is mixed use commercial. And we feel that, uh, uh, you're going to need a certain level of residents to maintain a viable business in the local area. So we feel that this will be a great asset for those businesses that develop future locations in the area. Now, here's the site plan that we came to after, you know, a lot of deliberation, a lot of back and forth with, with designer view committee. They had some great suggestions that we implemented and that we feel made it a better project. As you, here's East Forty-Fifth on the left side. As you enter in the center drive aisle, uh, you, you can, you're, have a rear alley access, double car garages on each building. Uh, the parking is located centrally in the site, so there's no, uh, we're not tucking the parking in a corner of the site and future residents or guests of residents have to walk, you know, a half a mile across or a extensive distance. So that was intentional to keep that centrally located. Uh, we do have great connectivity throughout the site. You can see that this connects all the way through to these, uh, entrances, private entrances on the east. Uh, we have these courtyards in the center area and then this is more of the urban frontage on East Forty-Fifth. The project consists of triplex and duplex structures, all two-story. And we, the amenities on the site are, we have a, a terminus view that was a big a part of the designer view committee's comments, and they really wanted to see you pull in there. You have a great view that you're looking at. So that's a, a shed roof gazebo, which we'll look at some renderings in a moment, adjacent to an open green space, which provides, you know, people with a covered area to sit, play, relax in that open area. As well as we have ample bike storage and bike parking, we're providing twelve bike stalls, which is well above the requirement. And looking at open space, here's what we're showing, uh, counting towards our open space and we're right at ten point six percent, right above what is the required for the PUD. And most of that is that shared courtyard space, some space counted along the, the eight foot six, uh, landscape buffer along East Forty-Fifth. And then these private yards in the rear side, as well as this, uh, shared gazebo space and open space area. Now, looking at what open spaces with i- inside or outside of the setbacks, uh, green area here is the right of way. The yellow is the building setback area and then the blue on the perimeters is the perimeter setbacks. And the area in red is what counts to that three thousand thirty-one hundred square feet of area, open area outside of the setbacks, which meets our three thousand minimum square footage. A variety of housing has been a, a big topic, you know, it's, it was a big driver in how we laid out this site and, and how we came to the, the plan that we currently have and the different types of buildings that we produce throughout. So the way we accomplish that goal is through three different types of buildings. There are four types overall, but um, there are essentially three, um, similar types that have a, a similar feel. Type one is your more urban frontage. So these ones, we do have offices located at, at level two of these, which we'll look at some floor plans in a minute. But it really has more of an urban feel, you know, in addition to the offices being on the second level. But you know, you have cars going by, it's much more active, uh, it's less private than it would be on the, uh, type three, which I'll get to. Uh, type two are courtyards. So you have, uh, you know, kind of a semi-private area, you can, greater connectivity with your neighbor. You know, a foster's a greater sense of community as, as neighbors interact, go to the grocery store, come and go. Um, just much more connectivity, uh, for residents. And type three, we have more of that traditional private yard. So on the east side, you walk a walk here, walk through the center amenity space and then coming up to these private entrances. So as you're sitting on this patio here, you have a very private location, which is more indicative of a single family residential. And I should mention in the planning zoning hearing, you know, uh, we really had to explain that the reason that we did it this way was because it's the experience that matters. It's, you know, not so much if you have a commercial building next to a single family, next to a multifamily, what's the experience of living there? And we feel that what we provided here provides that different differential experience at each location that a person would live at. I should also touch on in addition to that, the architectural, uh, language of the project, uh, you know, we do have these, you know, gable roofs with shed roof elements, uh, but each building speaks a similar language, but has a different form. So there's a commonality, a ribbon of commonality throughout it, but it does define a distinctive language for each building as well as the color variation. So building type one, two, three, and then this is also a separate color. You can see here, each of these three different color varieties, which we'll look at closer. All those together really combine to, to produce a, a vibrant community that has great diversity. In the floor plans, we also have, you know, different variations in those. Where here we have a detached kitchen island. And here we have a U-shaped kitchen island. Now on level, so this is that unit for the, the work with, the unit with the office above. So here's that office, you know, dedicated office space. Uh, we also have variety in walk-in closets versus non-walk-in closets, dual vanities and a guest bath versus single vanities and a guest bath. As we look at, uh, building type three, uh, here we have different stair layouts. This is more of a, a U-shaped stair and this is all open to below. Then we have more of an L-shaped stair here with wraps around a, a home office. It's not a dedicated home office, but you could have a desk there that, you know, you can have more of a, a non-permanent home office, I should say. And looking at level two, this is that open to below space. So this will let a lot of daylight into that central hallway. You know, really enhance the, the interior space of that unit. And then here, this also will let a lot of daylight in, in on the, the east side of this building. Building type four, similar open to below concept, but here we also have an additional patio. So this is the main entrance patio. But these people also, who would live, future residents would have a additional private space as well. And then building, this is, sorry, that was building type three. This is building type four, uh, level two, I should say. Uh, here again, open to below, a lot of daylight coming in that main hallway space. On the color boards, you know, we took time to, to see what colors would fit that eclectic vibe and that, you know, office, office feel. So this is the urban frontage of building type one, and we have horizontal lap siding, uh, stucco, hardy panel and brick. And we do have two varieties of brick throughout the project. Uh, there are, you know, we didn't want to have too much variety, so that we wanted to have complementary brick colors, but a little bit of variation in addition. You can see ample use of brick. I mean, we're going all the way up to, you know, twelve feet or so with that brick. So it's, it's, we're not, uh, skimping on quality materials. Uh, the roof is asphalt with standing seam metal at these pop-up elements, as well as these entry elements, really contrast that traditional and modern feel. Building type two, this is that courtyard elevation, so similar material palette, but alternating the colors. And eat, I should also note that each door has a complementary color that goes with that, which adds a sense of wayfinding for residents as somebody's visiting them. They can say, I have the, the blue door, or, you know, they can, it enhances the connectivity and the, the wayfinding of a, of a visitor. Building type three, this is those, these are those private yards. So again, this, we have ample brick here with, uh, parapet roofs as well. So another variety of architectural language. And then building type four, which looks into the, the southern courtyard. Here's a rendering, looking at East Forty-Fifth Street. Now here you can see we have ample windows, really has more of an office feel to it. Uh, you know, that, again, that urban, you know, high activity type of feel. And here's a view looking into the project. You can see these are those courtyards, uh, here and here, uh, the urban frontage. Uh, parking, I should note, uh, you know, we initially did have a one-stall parking waiver. We were counting all our star stalls onsite and we were one shy. So we were counting, uh, one on street. Uh, we had additional on-street parking, which is, per ACHD is not, could go away at a future date. Um, with the new parking code, though, we are four stalls in surplus, which is in the planning report. This shows that terminus view of that gazebo down that center aisle. And I should, on the parking waiver for the nine by eighteen stall, what, this, uh, green island here, you know, while it may look simple and small, you know, it, it took a lot of effort and it was a big decision to, to make that happen because by going to nine by eighteen, we're able to landscape around the, the central mail location, provide that landscaping to push out into the parking. So you don't just have a row of asphalt parking, greater, uh, safety for that crossing element right here. Which then can, then, you know, just it forces that connection between those two courtyards and reaches out to that southern one. Now you can see we have ample bike parking. This is one of two, uh, six bu- bike parking stall locations. And it really, you know, quiet, uh, semi-public, semi-private space in these interior courtyards. This is that terminus view that we worked extensively with designer view committee on. And you can see the difference between, you know, while they're speaking the same architectural language, these two buildings, you know, inherently feel different and you can, they're easy to find. Where do you live? I mean, the, the brown building towards the back with the hip roof, you know? And then here you have again that, that ample brick, uh, so this whole base point is all brick. Whole base of that building. So again, quality materials. One thing to note is in the designer view committee, one of the items that came up was adding glass plate, glass panels to the garage doors up here, which we do intend to do, and we did submit elevations that show that. This rendering just has not been updated to reflect that, but that would be in the final design. So in summary, this is a vibrant residential community that provides ample open space, connectivity and amenities in a new urbanism layout that hides the parking, creates a, a variety of housing throughout. I urge you to consider the immense potential this project has in breeding, bringing needed housing to Garden City and needed community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, counsel, Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. Look, you obviously put a lot of work into this. I just have a, a couple of questions. One is on the centralized trash receptacle. One of the things that we get a lot of inquiries, uh, is just trash is kind of been an issue of how it's going to be picked up. Do you have in writing that that works for public services?
Yes.
I didn't see anything in the packet or in this.
Yes, yeah. So they, uh, this is yeah, their turnaround's good. This is, you can see this light dash line here. That's their fifty-foot backup distance, so they can pull in, back up, pick it, back up and head out.
Okay. And then the other question I had is on the Fairview Acres ditch. Um, I'm assuming you're going to tile it and move it. But I'm also assuming that you're tapping into the Fairview Acres water supply to irrigate the landscape as well. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
African said yes, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Page.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wheeler, thank you for your presentation today. I also had a question about the, the tiling of the, uh, of the waterway. Um, it will, uh, has your, it looks like maybe that waterway is directly under the, the central drive, I think you are calling it, or close to, will you have, um, the ability to, to service that? You know, in, in the, uh, unfortunate event of collapse or, or, uh, you know, a, a damage to the, to the tiling manner. I'm, I'm familiar with a neighborhood in Garden City that's, uh, you know, struggling with a, a constant, uh, expense to the, to the HOA of, of servicing a, a waterway that's been tiled.
Um, well, we'll be rerouting that up to the north through this gravity irrigation line, coming up through here and out, out here. So we're not going to tile over this and keep that as a running access point. If that, and if I understand your question correctly.
Thank you. I misunderstood that entirely. I appreciate you clarifying that.
Well, that's a good question. Yeah, I appreciate, appreciate it.
So is there a ninety-degree turn there in that year or is it? You go along the top, but does that affect the flow at all?
Um, our engineers have indicated that, no, it maintains adequate flow.
Any further questions?
Mr. Sir?
Yes.
Um, thank you for your presentation. Uh, what is your demographic target for the different types of units?
Yeah, um, more working professionals. I mean, that, that's really what we're looking to, to serve in this area. I think that's one of, that's who a lot of Garden City people moving to Garden City are, and that, you know, they're looking for that variety of housing for those, um, you know, niche businesses, niche hangouts, that type of thing. Uh, but we're not trying to only serve them. I mean, that, that's who we have in mind in general. But we feel that, I mean, this could be appropriate for someone in their mid twenties, or it could be appropriate for someone in their mid, late forties, or even their sixties. I mean, depending on their needs.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Just gonna put this on this last slide.
Um, mayor's members of the, the council, um, I will keep my presentation brief as I don't know that I have too much to add to that. Um, just maybe some record items, um, that, uh, Mr. Wheeler may have indicated, um, but I may reiterate. Um, this is for a combined preliminary final plat processes of plan unit development. Um, located at two oh seven East Forty-Fifth Street. It's for twenty-three lots. Um, the reason that it's being processed as a plan unit development, there are four waivers that are being requested. Uh, the first of which is for zero lot lines, the second of which is more than four units on a common drive. And then And then there are two waivers being requested, um, regarding parking, both the number of parking as well as the dimensions. Um, the, the zero lot line, uh, staff would like to just note for the, the record, uh, where, uh, that waiver has been recommended for approval. Um, that's certainly something that the applicant could utilize, but as construction, uh, builds out, uh, building regulations may require, um, further setbacks or easements to be able to deal, uh, with, with that request. Um, as for the parking, uh, this application came in prior to the city council approving what I'll refer to as the new parking, uh, code. And so that is why that there, there happened, the waivers requested. Um, as Mr. Wheeler has noted that, uh, this application was deficient under the, the quote unquote old code, uh, but is, um, is not deficient in parking under the new code. And really that's just a switch in guest parking where the old code, uh, required eleven uh, guest parking spaces. The new code requires seven and there are nine provided. And so the staff report me, I believe, does say four. Um, but it is, I believe it to be two, uh, the surplus under the new code. But again, uh, this application, uh, predates, uh, the new code. Um, also of note, the landscaping and open space, uh, plans, um, haven't been revised to, to match the site plan, but there is a general assumption uh, that, that they're not deficient and that they would match, um, should they come through. And finally, just noting, a plan unit development does require the, um, variety of different housing types over ten units. Um, when there's more than ten units provided, and the planning and zoning commission was quite complimentary of how this application addressed that. Um, we see a lot of applicants, uh, utilize, um, floor plans, et cetera. Um, but there was a comment from one of the commissioners that they felt that this has done the best job of really addressing the different types of needs, um, as identified it, um, in the plan unit development code. And with that, I stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, I don't have anyone signed up to testify. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing at this point, uh, on S U B F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one. And ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to testify. Hey. And so our video seems to be working tonight. Is there anyone online that would like to testify? If so, use the raise your hand tool on the Zoom call. Okay, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Wheeler, do you have any final thoughts? Uh, not much to rebut. Nobody testified.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, the only thing I would add is on the zero lot line, uh, you know, that issue is we will have shared walls in the, the walls that, you know, are between each unit. And then we do have three-foot setbacks around all the exterior perimeter walls. So from a fire separation distances or anything to that effect, uh, we are in compliance with building code. Um, other than that, um, yeah, I was misspoke, misspoken on the, the four stalls over, but even at the two stalls over, I think that's, uh, you know, parking is something that drives a lot of developments and is, is tricky to, to get that in there and meet a lot of the other requirements. So, um, I would say, I think that's that will not be an issue parking in this site. In addition to the quarter mile mass transit that it has the capacity to, for residents to use. So.
Very good.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I want to compliment you, Mr. Wheeler, on your projects, um, design and cooperation with planning and zoning. It's, uh, it's, it's a pleasure to see something turn out, uh, this way in accommodating, um, the city's needs and, uh, most design requirements. So.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, sir. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing now. Um, council. Matters properly before you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I move, uh, approval of, uh, uh, the decision document for S U B F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one mod court townhomes.
Hey, got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, and this may be a question for Mr. Holmes. So just for clarity, uh, in the, the draft findings of fact and conclusions of law, are we approving this? If we were to approve it, is it under the existing parking code that the application came in with, and then it would require a waiver? Or are we approved? If we were to approve it, would it be under the new code? And then there would be no waivers required?
I think that's a Miss Thornborough question. Um, I can't, I did hear Miss Thornborough say that this application was submitted under the old version of the code. So the legal standard would be that the, it's the old version of the code that supplies. It's the version of the code that the version of the code that applies is the one that was in place at the time the application was submitted.
So the findings of fact and conclusions of law would require the waiver?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, uh, yes. Um, as, as recommended, it does include the waiver as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Any further discussion, I should say. Okay, hearing none for color.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Go to item G three. This is also a public hearing, S U B F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two. Uh, Carolyn Circle. Council, any member of council need to declare a conflict on this hearing? Okay, hearing none. Let the record reflect, no conflicts were, uh, expressed. Uh, this is a combined preliminary and final plat. Uh, Taryn Mitchell, Taryn, raise your hand or who's, you're, you're doing the presentation?
I don't think that.
Okay, um, uh, we'll follow the same procedures we just had. Uh, if you would come up and, uh, present your application, that'll be followed by Ms. Thornborough. After which we'll open the public hearing. I have two people signed up. We'll get that testimony and any other testimony. Uh, then you'll have the final, uh, opportunity to address the council. We'll close the public hearing and we'll go to the council. So uh, if you would, uh, give us your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Kevin Hawk, address is one two zero four four West Dallin Drive, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven one three.
Okay.
And I'm going to log into my, uh, Google account to pull up the president.
Very good. Did you spell your last name for us?
Hawk, H A W K. Just like the bird.
Okay, thank you.
You know if I'm sharing on Zoom or not.
Uh, well, we'll see if I.
Can everyone on Zoom see this? Awesome. Um, Mr. Mayor Evans and councilmembers, thank you for the ability to present today. Um, this is Carolyn Circle Project, uh, located in Garden City. Uh, we've collaborated with both design review and planning and zoning and really took a lot of thought into their feedback recommendations. And we really feel like we incorporated everything that both those governing bodies wanted to see for the recommended approval. And we're very excited to share those today, um, here at city council. Uh, so location of this site, as you can see, located right here next to the boardwalk, along with, uh, Heron Park. Garden City is doing such a good job of bringing in that vibrant feel, um, and really playing off the Greenbelt and the Boise River that it has to offer. And we're really excited to be able to bring this project and really capitalize on what the city wants to see there. Um, everything that is in the vicinity and in the area is zoned R three and C two. Um, there has been discussions, um, in what we've seen with Garden City as far as promoting density. Um, with that, there is thirty-five units, uh, dwellings, excuse me, allowed per acre. And what we are providing is twenty-nine units per gross acre with that. Um, additionally, um, some of the, um, facilities that we have were off a main street here on Veterans that comes along with Adams on the south side. Uh, Boise Greenbelt Access is right there. That goes right on up to, um, the Greenbelt. Along with, and if you had left, is the new boardwalk that is there. Um, obviously the boardwalk is really advancing the city of Garden City. And we're happy to be able to provide housing that can utilize those amenities of what they have off the Greenbelt, including the boardwalk as well. As you can see right here, here's a bird's eye view as well. So here's Carolyn Circle. Uh, there's another development project that is currently under construction called Violet's Crossing that is located right there with the boardwalk on that side as well. Going through our site plan and how we collaborated with both designer view and planning and zoning. Um, a couple of waivers that we are asking for, it's very similar to the last application when we submitted this, the parking code has now changed since then. So a couple of waivers that we are asking for, instead of a ten by twenty stalls, we are asking for nine by twenty stalls. So we are short one foot with that. Additionally, with the waiver, um, with the old parking code, we are deficient seven spaces. With the new parking code that has been implemented, we actually overpark it by one. Um, within that parking, everything that is needed for enclosed, uh, garage parking is needed. On the old existing, um, parking code, we're seven deficient in guest spaces. But like I mentioned with the new parking code, we actually overpark it by one with that. Uh, other waivers that we're asking for is the interior lot setbacks. And the last one is the open space requirement. We're just slightly short at a hundred and forty-five square feet. Moving on to our site plan now, a couple of big things that really design review and planning and zoning wanted to see with this is coming on in, uh, making sure that our interior roads, all those units are facing those roads. So what with what we have here on, uh, excuse me, Fortieth Street and Reed Street right here, uh, we have both of those dwellings facing those interior roads, which we'll see later in our elevations. A couple of other big pieces they want to see was a clear green terminal view. So coming in right here off of Reed Street and coming in off of Fortieth Street right here, we both have green view spaces. Um, from the design review committee, they didn't want that looking down into a building or some type of structure. They wanted to be the beautiful landscaping that Garden City has. So we have done both of those with an open space right here. And then our walking trail on the south side as well. Um, a couple of other pieces that design review wanted to see is they wanted to see the site have entrances on the perimeters of the project instead of coming in from the garage accessway. So we have connectivity with all of our sidewalks that connect throughout the whole project with the front doors being on the perimeter of the site. Um, we think that was a great recommendation. We took that feedback and implemented that into our plans. The next thing that brings up is our three amenities. Uh, the three amenities that we are carrying, uh, first and foremost are enclosed bike storage. Uh, feedback we heard from design review is they wanted two entrances and two exits for there. Um, so we have one located on this sidewalk that accesses it from, let's call it the backside. And then we implemented a crosswalk. So these units over here can utilize this bike storage safely by going through a pedestrian, uh, crosswalk at this point. Uh, the other community, excuse me, amenities that we have as well is our community raised garden beds. Um, we feel like that's a great amenity for everything being near the Greenbelt and the Boise River. And at the end of the day, everyone loves to have that boutique neighborhood garden feel, which we're able to offer to these residents. And then the last piece that we have as far as our amenity is the very bottom, which is our walking trail. Um, we, uh, got some feedback at the planning and zoning level from a public testimony um, about the third amenity that we had in the space, which was a bocce court located right here. Now with that bocce court, we had both recommended approvals at design review level and planning and zoning level. Hearing the feedback from the public testimony, we collaborated with our architect, our engineers, uh, including Jenna and Hannah at the city to be able to accommodate as much as possible, any neighborhood complaints for the site. And we feel like we have checked that off our box with including a walking trail in this area. What? As far as the bocce court, it's under the same code as what we have as a walking trail. So um, the other benefit of us having the walking trail is we're going to have more landscaping, green space in this area, um, which allows us to put more trees along this south and west perimeter side. Um, next one, moving on down. You can see here's our bird eye view from the top, uh, has a site layout. So as you can see, access from Fortieth, access from Reed right here. All amenities located in the central portion on the south side for all residents to use. Here's our view coming off of Fortieth Street as well. So you can see right here, here's our drive coming down with enclosed parking garages for all units that meet the requirement. We have our perimeter access into, um, each of the front doors of the units. One thing that, uh, designer view really wanted to see is to show that that's the front of the building. So it's a little challenging to see behind this tree because we wanted to include all the landscaping, but there's a large canopy cover right here, along with extra windows that we put in and front door access. And that's on both sides of those. Another thing that designer view wanted to see was to have the enclosed biking storage look purposeful. Um, so what we did, it's that really cool look that you're seeing. That's a lot more popular now, that green facade that you don't need a water. It's kind of a fake green. Makes it really look earthy and purposeful with it. The other, um, item they wanted to see is us increase the elevation to show different dimensions and the three materials that we're using, which we um, believe we accomplished that with also adding the windows in that area. Another look of the inside right here is where you can see garage parking balconies above. This is now from Reed Street looking south. You can see the front entrance into both of these buildings really stands out. We feel like we really heard designer view and planning and zoning as far as having a variety of housing. With that, we offer one and two bedrooms for variety, along with the different buildings on how they are laid out with the material, the difference on the facade, excuse me, and the different colors. Moving on now to our four plans, um, we spent a lot of time on this, making sure that we're as efficient as possible for all residents inside this development. Um, this is our one-bedroom units, um, ample amount of space for your family dining room, kitchen island in the middle. Master bedroom, we have right here that onsite suite as well that comes out to your private balcony from your bedrooms. One thing that we're really proud of and I'm excited about is with, through our, uh, pass-through closet to get into our bathrooms. We, uh, put in workstations right here, um, that are going to be outfitted with a desk, some outlets and some lights as we're seeing, you know, especially in a post-COVID time. A lot more work from home or work, work remote type of, um, workforce that we're seeing. So we're very proud to be able to bring that in. Each of our units will also have a washer and dryer on, uh, inside each of those units. So as you can see here, we have access through the bedroom and then also access from the main living as well. This right here is our two-bedroom units. You can see ample amount of space for your family dining room, kitchen island, both are master suites with it as well, along with the other access. So, um, workspaces in each of the closets as well, um, to be able to really provide that work from home lifestyle if these residents so choose to. Couple more elevations, just really want to, um, point out right here, the walking trail that we have as far as the green space and what we're going to be able to bring into as far as trees and landscaping. Um, again, going off design review's recommendations, they really wanted that clear terminal into green landscaping. Uh, we feel like we've We feel like we've checked off that box by providing this. Top view right here that really illustrates where our biking storage will be. Walking trail as well for all the residents, excuse me, not walking trail, I apologize. Walking access pathway for all these residents on this side to be able to use those amenities. Here's what our community space shows. This is just on the north side. So here's our community garden beds that we have and then along with the walking trail in the back. As you can see, we are trying as hard as possible to bring this as a green environment with the trees and shrubs that we have. And that is the completion of our presentation.
Great, thank you. Questions, council? Yes, sir.
Mr. Hawk, same question that I asked the previous applicant. I didn't see any comments from Republic Storage on how trash would be picked up. Yeah, multifamily plus townhomes. I'm a little curious to see how people could bring the trash in from the multifamily units. And yet an entrance, two entrances, but not down the third, I could see it was landscape up. So Republic Services, my understanding is they're going to go in reverse to pick up trash. So do you have written approval from them? Because it's not in the packet and we don't have agency comments there?
Yes, we have written approval from Republic Services. What we are doing is you're going to see on the site plan, we have the garages. Provide the enclosed trash bins and they will be brought out to the center road on trash day.
And so how is that going to get picked up down? I guess the question is that they can't, they're going to. For that one leg that doesn't have, doesn't go through, they're going to put the trash bins on the street. Republic Stores is going to go backwards?
Yes, that's what the letter we have from them that we presented this and they said that they were.
Can you submit that? I guess it's not the record. So I would like to see that. The, yeah, a letter from them saying that that's okay. Yes. And then the same question I also had is irrigation for landscape going to be used at Fairview Acres?
Unfortunately, we're not able to tap into it. It's not located on our property and the property owner won't allow us to access it. So we will be bringing in municipal city water for the landscaping.
So that is, is it just distance or he just won't let you?
Distance and he has no desire to work with us to allow us to tap into it.
It's unfortunate. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. I appreciate your presentation today. I couldn't help but notice in the renderings, it looks like there's some clever use of zero scape. Perhaps not burdening our water supply as much as some of the plants that we see. And, and I personally think that that's a responsible choice. I am curious about the enclosed bike storage. That material is, what is, I'm unfamiliar with that. Is that like a, like a wallpaper or what it, kind of what is that interesting green? Structure that I see.
Yes. As far as the material goes, it's essentially what it looks like is fake leaves and fake grass. It's becoming a heck of a lot more popular and big commercial buildings that need to move their dividers to break up the rooms and spacing. So instead of just a wall you have, it's at least something that's eye appealing when you look at it. And it's going to be a green facade look that essentially looks like fake green leaves. Or excuse me, it looks like real green leaves, but they are fake, which still maintains, you know, in the winter time, now having to upkeep it and it still gives that green vibrance in this project.
Thank you very much.
Okay, further questions? Very good. Thank you. Call on you again at the end of the public hearing.
And mayor members of the council, very similar coming up where Mr. Hawk has done a great job thoroughly going over the application. And the first thing I would like to note is the renderings that you saw tonight are a late exhibit. They did come in today. Really the changes that you're seeing with these late exhibits is the update from the bocce ball court to the walking trail in the renderings. As well as that bike enclosure that council president Paige keyed into. And then we'll find. An overall site plan, not that I think that it's necessary for a discussion. And I will keep it brief. As Mr. Hawk indicated, they are, this, this is a combined preliminary final plat processed as a plan unit development. And the waivers that are being requested include a zero lot line, more than four units on a common drive. Both parking number as well as dimension and common open space. And similar commentary, just to get on the record that even if a zero lot line is approved. And would be appropriate with units that are adjacent to each other, they still need to meet building code from fire penetrations and setbacks, et cetera. And a couple of items of note on this particular application. Creative ways that the applicant has addressed things. Code does require that multifamily units have, when there's more than a certain number, that there's an office space on site. And there's conditions of approval requiring a directory. So if the police department or if a tenant needs to get a hold of somebody, they can always get a hold of someone. As well as biweekly onsite visits so that potential for dilapidation is, is avoided. And so that's how they're addressing the onsite management office is, is through. A twenty four hour service as well as biweekly visits and those are conditioned. It's also noteworthy that there, there is a deficiency that they would need to meet related to tree mitigation. There would be fifty two point five calipers of trees that would need to be met and that's also conditioned within the approval. And. Did want to note, as Mr. Hawk had noted, that at the planning and zoning commission level, there, there was some public testimony concern concerning the bocce ball court. And how those hours of operation would interact as well as the deficiency in parking. With the site, there has been additional public comment that's come in concerned with the perimeter landscaping. Code does require between adjacent uses that there is ten feet of perimeter landscaping. And the intent for that perimeter landscaping as defined by code. Does talk about creating a visual barrier, protecting from noise, dust, traffic glare. Providing privacy, et cetera. And the applicant is proposing arboida. In that, in that area, particularly the one, well, around the entire perimeter of the, the application. But particularly where there has been concern, staff has looked. And would like to note that arboida tends to be about three to four feet in width at maturity. While it would grow taller, it may not meet that six foot requirement at maturity. A six foot overall privacy buffer. However, it would be a great plant that could create a hedging effect for some privacy. During the planning and zoning commission, the recommendation does include. A condition of approval that would have the applicant work with staff to, to identify the best possible perimeter landscaping. I also believe that there might be some concern about the longevity of that landscaping. There is a draft condition of approval for the duration of use on page seventeen of the. Recommendation. Number four, A is the property owner or the homeowners association would be responsible for the maintenance of that landscaping. As well as any landscaping, number C, four C would require a replacement of that landscaping. And so that is conditioned within this draft decision document, which follows the planning and zoning commission recommendation. And I would also like to note, as Mr. Hawk already did, that while this application. What is deficient under the quote unquote old parking code. There is that surplus of one guest parking space, so it would be compliant with current code if it came in today. And with that. And I stand for any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Thorzold, I had the impression on pages one fifty six, one fifty seven of the. Decision document. That. Your office was. Challenged by the use of the arboida and not providing canopy and so forth. And did I read somewhere or misread that a recommendation was to have a conversation on that? Was that from a previous edition of the?
Mayor, council member Heller, certainly, if you look at the landscaping ordinance. There's overall purpose statement that's very broad. That talks about how to utilize or what the purpose of utilizing landscaping is. And most often we see the use of kilometer not meeting the branching shading that enhances the pedestrian experience. And takes into account a lot of those, those purpose statements. However, staff is also suggesting that for the, the. Purpose of perimeter landscaping. If you look at perimeter landscaping, the purpose statement, it does talk about privacy and visual barriers protections from noise, dust, traffic glare, et cetera. And so, and our providing may not be an appropriate street tree for sure. Would not be, it's actually would not be a code permitted street tree. But in certain instances, perhaps that arboida might be appropriate to allow for the, the privacy.
Yeah, I would, I guess I was. I was, I was trying to. Understand the meaning of what, what this reads. Intent of the perimeter landscaping trees to establish a continuous canopy coverage. To which the arboida does not provide discussion regarding the proposed perimeter landscaping is required. As staff does not believe arboida trees meet the intent of code. So help me understand the, the meaning of that.
And Mayor, council member Heller, I, I think that the staff member that drafted the staff report that you're referencing may, may have. Been referring to the, the adequacy of, of utilizing the arboida. I'm not sure that she intended to talk specifically at that point to the. The shading, however, she may have, because if you're looking at this overall plan, you can see there's a lot of walking areas. And that would certainly enhance the pedestrians' experience if there is shading and.
Sure, I was, I was more concerned about the perimeter that borders and neighbors. Property, so this is not a condition calling for further discussion of that issue or is?
And Mayor, council member Heller, there is a, the planning and zoning commission did recommend that the perimeter landscaping be further discussed with staff. But to defer that discussion to staff. And so there would be an allowance to change out some of the landscaping.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Thorngrenborough?
Further questions, I should say.
I'm, I'm a bit concerned with the. With the, the summary, the overview of this application, particularly the, you know, within the overview. There's a, you know, fairly three paragraphs called out to talk about the landscaping. And, you know, particularly the, the zero escaping. And the, the thing that concerns me is the, the final statement of, you know, it might conflict with Garden City code. So if, if we're looking at a per application with landscaping that's in conflict with the codes. What's the, what's the extent, particularly when there's a statement of saying at least seventy percent vegetation at maturity?
And Mayor, council member Jorgensen, thank you for that. Code does require that landscaping areas are seventy percent vegetation to be considered landscaping areas. And so what that would mean is zero escaping could have a lot of rock mulch and you just have small little plants. Unless there's seventy percent landscaping within those areas, they would not be considered code compliant landscaping. And another area that is of. Concern that I, I do want to discuss, that's part of the public comment that was submitted with this application. Is code does require ten feet of perimeter landscaping between adjacent uses. That has been interpreted as both properties could supply five feet in the, in the past. However, code does also require six feet of planting materials at maturity to be considered to meet that perimeter landscaping.
One more question, and, and this is why I'm concerned about this application is further on. There is preservation provisions and there's a statement not compliant. The application will be required to mitigate fifty two and a half caliber inches on site. The landscape plan does not show proper mitigation from calipers removed.
And Mayor, council member Jorgensen, that, that is correct. As demonstrated in the site plan, the application does not meet the, the mitigation requirements. The city does have alternatives that have been adopted by resolution, including they could pay into a fund. Or they could find other locations offsite if they're unable to find additional locations on site to meet those mitigation requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Keeping with the landscaping. So the way I understand it, the permabark is part of that seventy percent?
Yes, Mayor, councilman and Bury Jacobs. So if an area is to be considered part of the landscaping calculations to meet the code requirement. Permabark, what would not be otherwise covered by bushes, plants, trees would not count as landscaping?
No, it would not, yeah. Just by two cents on the landscaping and the arboida is probably the worst tree that you could probably pick. I would suggest looking at just about anything else. They don't grow very fast. They have about a twenty to thirty percent mortality rate. So you'll be removing and replacing a lot of them. They don't provide shade and they're just not an overall good tree. And the reason I know that is because I worked for a garden center in a nursery. We don't, we try not to plant as many arboidas as possible. We try to avoid them in the nursery. Frankly, it doesn't warranty them anymore because they have such a high failure rate. Lots of other options. Welcome to go to a garden center near you and look. I will not put a plug, but, and, and then in the Zurich is, I think, a great way to save water. I would just encourage you to. They, it can make the landscape look very stark and not very attractive. And so I think you, you'd want to really get a, a good landscape architect to make sure that they, they, they put in the vegetation. So it doesn't look like you're living on the moon. So that, and then, then the question I. So that, and then then the question I had is the 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 buffer they have for the landscape is sufficient. Cause one of the public comments was it was fifty percent less than code, but in your interpretation is the buffer they have is sufficient. It's just what we're deciding is what's the best way to to make that look, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, how code has been interpreted, um, and there's precedent, is there's the five and five um between the two, two separate properties.
So we're just looking, maybe put a little bit more thought on the landscape, well, how it's designed and what trees and things you look.
This, this mayor of the store, I apologize for um maybe I'm beating this to death and I don't mean to, but uh so you're using the uh the code as it's been interpreted in terms of the five and five. But uh then you referred to a section of code that says uh and and my takeaway was then each each side of that uh of that perimeter has a six-foot obligation. So, how do you, how do you reconcile that?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, there there is the, there is the overall ten-foot requirement for perimeter landscaping. And then code, code has the, however, you have to have six feet of mature landscaping. So the area itself has to be ten feet wide, but the plantings then need to equate to the six.
So doesn't that suggest then that at least six feet each side is is what the code intended rather than uh how it may have been interpreted? And I'm not, uh, I'm not criticizing how it was interpreted, I'm just, uh, again, I'm I'm concerned about the the that one neighbor in particular, there's comments on on the perimeter.
Mayor, Councilmember Heller, I I agree with that statement that intuitively, then you would need at least six feet um to be able to handle the landscaping.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any further questions, staff? Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing, I've got two signups, okay. Uh, on S U V F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two. Uh, and I'll call on uh Geneva Ariara.
Yeah.
Sort of.
Yeah.
Aera, okay. Is that what you told me?
Uh, I'm just to let you.
Okay. And uh it looks like you're accompanied by Mr. Zertz. Okay. Welcome, uh, if you would, uh, give us your name and address for the record. And just make this. We need to get you really close to the mic, there we go.
Geneva Yara, four thirteen East Fortia Street.
Act like we're your kids and you've gotta holler across the. Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting us speak tonight. Okay.
Uh, start, start with your name and address.
Geneva Yara, four thirteen East Fortia Street, Garden City, Idaho.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And as you can see, this is our property with the um the red lines indicating the one hundred and seventy-one feet of property line that we share with the proposed subdivision. This highlights the importance of the minimum ten-foot perimeter landscaping required by the development code, especially when the applicant wants to put a common open space next to our backyard. This will impact us in terms of noise and loss of privacy, more so given the requested fifty percent reduction in perimeter landscaping. The June sixth Planning and Zoning Decision Document indicates that prior to approval of construction plans, perimeter landscaping shall be required to meet Garden City standards, Garden City Code standards. These standards are simple. It should be at least ten feet wide, there should be a screen of vegetation at least six feet wide and six feet tall. And there should be at least one tree every fifteen feet to quickly establish continuous canopy coverage. This application does not meet any of the perimeter landscaping standards. The applicant has asked for a variance due to the narrowness of the lots and the benefits of the types of residential housing to the community. But this request does not meet the required considerations listed in the code for variances, which are A, the variance is indeed the result of the applicant's actions. B, yes, the variance will negatively impact the community neighborhood in terms of noise and loss of privacy. C, there is no undue hardship requiring a variance. And D, the variance is not the minimum relief to allow reasonable use of the property. The staff report also mentions, as was discussed earlier, the city has continuously enforced five-foot wide perimeter landscape buffers with the knowledge that the adjacent property would also be required to install five-foot perimeter landscaping upon redevelopment. The issue is that this interpretation of the development code is not applicable in our case. Our property will not be further developed, this is a new home and no other redevelopment will come in the future to add the missing five-foot perimeter landscaping to the one hundred and seventy-one foot perimeter that we share. If the standards are not implemented now, they never will be, therefore depriving us of the benefits of a ten-foot perimeter landscaping buffer. In conclusion, the applicant has not established a substantial need for a perimeter landscaping variance as required by the Garden City Development Code. Therefore, the perimeter landscaping variance should be denied and the application applicant asked to implement the standards at least around our property lines. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, uh, questions, staff or council? Thank you.
I am Todor Azurza, four thirteen East Fortieth Street, Garden City, eight three seven one four. The application does not meet the perimeter landscaping requirements with the consequent impact in terms of noise and loss of uh privacy. The developer proposes to implement an open common space along our eastern property line marked there in red. This eastern property line is where the bedroom, living room, office and deck are located and where the majority of windows and opening space. These living spaces are located in the second floor. To illustrate how close the open space will be will be from the above areas, I would like to share with you some pictures taken from the deck, the office and the bedroom. So these are the uh the pictures from the deck and the pictures from the office and the bedroom. Uh, the common open space will be located with the construction material next to the fences. I appreciate the replacement of the previously proposed sports court with a nature trail that will probably have less noise disturbance and a graded aesthetic appeal for the community. Nevertheless, the congreg- congregation of people in this common space will definitely impact us in terms of noise and loss of privacy, especially given the requested fifty percent reduction in perimeter landscaping width. In conclusion, this application does not meet the perimeter landscaping requirements and no substantial reasons have been provided to ask for, to ask for or respect a variance. Therefore, these variants that were used by fifty percent, the perimeter landscaping width should be denied. And the Garden City perimeter landscaping standard should be implemented as stated in the June sixth Planning and Zoning Decision Document. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, any questions, council? Very good, thank you very much, sir. Uh, anyone else uh that's joined us remotely wishes to testify on this item? Hey, let the record reflect, uh, no one else uh wishes to testify. Uh, Mr. Hawk, you have the last last word?
To help with some of the landscaping questions, I'm asking our architect, Taren Mitchell, to also stand up here as well.
Okay.
Uh, just a couple of things from hearing from the public uh hearing. Um, I've been on site now for a year and a half on this site where I've fielded um ample amount of questions, trying to adjust what's needed. So we have heard the feedback, hence why we're changing it from a bocce court to the walking trail. We feel like having a walking trail is not a noise nuisance or an issue. Um, as far as that's where people are gonna enjoy their walks inside the neighborhood as far as the residents. Uh, bocce court, we could see some of the issue with some noise and issues. I think it was a little exaggerated last time, as I believe bocce is either a two-man or four-man sport. Um, and having, you know, over thirty people be um guests to watch that doesn't quite seem um like it would be too realistic, but again, what we're hearing from the public hearing, we're willing to work and converted that to a walking trail where we don't believe that's gonna be a noise um nuisance as all. And then I'd like to introduce our architect to cover a couple of other things with the landscape as well.
Yes, if you would give us your name and address.
Thought you might ask for that. Taren Mitchell, five three five Sawtooth Street, Mountain Home, Idaho.
Hey, uh, if you'd like to address the landscape issue.
Uh, yes, well, first of all, thank you for being so thorough, um, and appreciate our our neighbors for being thorough as well. Uh, would like to clarify a few things, so Arbor Vita was um suggested in the original application. And we are in discussions as um Ms. Thornborough mentioned. As part of the condition from planning and zoning, they suggested that we have continued conversation. What does that mean, I think is what uh Mr. Heller was was asking. So we're committed to before, hopefully not before city council approval, but before we have any construction document approval, so permit to start, that we have vetted the landscaping to find a suitable tree, so we're not at at all sold on Arbor Vita. We want to provide screening as the code indicates, the uh Garden City ordinance. But we also wanna meet the the uh the canopy coverage, of course, we know that seemingly there's somewhat of a contradiction for the for the planting, short of having an evergreen which could be very wide and narrow on top, doesn't really provide coverage at the perimeter. But then again, um, they don't necessarily provide uh screening or protection for your neighbors either. So that's why we think further discussion would be merited. Uh, the next item would be the the, I guess, the the claim that is a fifty percent, we're deficient by fifty percent, that that isn't um necessarily true, so. Um, the code indicates that you have a multifamily um responsibility, so there's certain design standards for multifamily. And then there's certain design standards for what would be a townhouse, fourplexes, duplexes, things of that nature. And the ten percent um uh landscaping requirement is for multifamily. Ours is a mixed use where we have a multifamily component and then a more traditional townhouse component. And so there were quite a few discussions with the uh the planning staff, so they were very good at getting back to us and saying, well, we think maybe you may be deficient here, so we made a bunch of changes or quite a few changes to try to address that as you as you as you see, so. Um, this latest iteration of our presentation shows a more current or the most current. Uh, but it um iteration, but it doesn't show the most current landscaping plan, so that would include the vegetation. The item that uh Mr. Hawk mentioned um about the bocce ball, originally, we didn't have bocce ball, we had just a community green space. Uh, so lawn, kids could frolic, um, and there would be more more opportunity for um screening and and shading and shade trees. Through the D R C uh meeting that we had, they suggested that we have something a little more active, more recreational, which is a requirement of multifamily, not in the other, but in multifamily. So uh bocce ball was mentioned as a very good or and suitable activity sports court. Uh, that would be a a great amenity. So uh at P and Z, we had the uh our our great neighbors come and say, well, we're a little concerned about the noise, is there an alternative? So um again, Mr. Hawk mentioned that in the city ordinance, on the same line of the of the ordinance itself, that mentions uh sports courts, it also mentions a walking trail. And because it's specifically listed, we thought, well, that would be a good safe bet to change what we had originally been approved for uh through planning and zoning. And that would provide additional opportunity for more trees. And so that brings in the fifty-two and a half inch caliper tree deficiency, that's one we don't take lightly. Uh, we know why it's there, um, as part of the ordinance. And so with a walking trail and a a green space that can be active, as the D R C indicated, where people can actually be there and congregate. Uh, that was something they really pushed and really wanted, and it does seem like an amenity that's worth having. So on the walking trail, again, there won't be congregations of thirty, forty people. Um, there'll probably be couples, um, some children, and um it would be a, uh, it would provide additional opportunity for additional trees that could fulfill the fifty-two and a half caliper or inch caliper requirement for vegetation. So I I think I checked off all the boxes, so.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Very good, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I will close the public hearing on S U B F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two, the matters before the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think um you know, all the efforts you can do to protect your neighbors, obviously, we we'd wanna take that into account with the additional caliper trees. You know, however way that looks when it when it gets to be landscaped, and I think having a walking path does mitigate noise and things like that versus um, I don't, I kind of agree, I'm not sure how many people use bocce courts, I've seen a lot of them. How much use they get, but I think having the trail would limit the noise, expanding the landscaping, adding trees. You know, if we all satisfy, you know, satisfied, reduce the intrusion that this would have on the next neighbors. Um, cause that is important, right? I I I understand it's difficult to have a development company next to you, and so anything that you can do to protect that, and I'm I'm glad that you add that language, I guess, there for further the discussion, cause I think that's one that's gonna have to really be thought through to to make it. As least intrusive to them as possible. Um, other than that, I I really don't see beyond kind of the landscaping. I haven't heard any testimony of anything uh that is negative against the development, that it seems to be well thought out. And so, I think, given kind of that discussion regarding the landscaping, that's part of the condition, I guess, of the of the approval of of the 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 don't sell, then I would move to approve. S U B F Y twenty-three oh two.
You've got a motion, uh, discussion can continue if I have a second. Okay, the current motion dies for lack of a second, uh, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I uh I've been very persuaded by uh the testimony of Ms. uh Ayara. I, in particular, the the language of the condition being waived uh i- is directly the result of the actions of the developer. And I I couldn't agree more with that. Although I I think the project is thoughtful and there's evidence that the applicant and the neighbors have worked together closely. The applicant has conceded where the neighbor did not want bocce and and created a walking trail. And I share the view of Councilmember Jacobs that the communities I've visited, bocce seems largely unused and trails become a place where people have a phone conversations when they're working from home or enjoy a cigarette. And that smoke can can travel into into neighboring areas. I just, I just feel that this buffer requirement is there for a reason. And I I'm not, I'm not persuaded that it should be waived under the set of circumstances before us tonight.
Hey, thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I I am going to echo President of the Council's comments. I, to to the best of my recollection, when we have what I'm going to refer to as split the different situations, it has not, I'm trying to recall, but when we have approved that scenario, it it has been butted up against commercial or otherwise easement type of property. I think the the public comment here is very valid. There's a code in place for a purpose. And I think this is a specific example of that purpose, and that is to help preserve some privacy around residential property and particularly if I were, you know, trying to preserve the property value of what is most often the largest investment any of us make, and that that becomes pretty concerning. I would also echo President of the Council's comments that I think this application was very thoughtful. It's very, there's a lot of very unique and creative approaches and solutions to it. And I think we're very friendly to development and but we also have to take into consideration our our residents and those that have invested in the in developing their own personal property in Garden City. And that is why I I just really have a hard time with not only with the perimeter, but some of the other waivers that are being asked for and the 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 landscape plan needs to be tightened up and more clearly in alignment with code, I believe.
Sure.
I had, I want to commend the the developer in this case for working with planning and zoning. I was struck by the term facade modulation and the need to add add some features to to the designs facing the road. And I think the the architect team responded to that. What I was hoping to hear with respect to the landscaping circles back to that statement, discussion regarding the proposed perimeter landscaping is required. As staff does not believe Arbor Vita trees meet the intent of code. So I suppose my interest is in seeing that issue addressed through further conversation. I don't know if if anything is is possible to to remedy the concern of your neighbors, but that's, that was my hope.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Hearing the comments of my colleagues, I would move for a a remand of this application so that with to the to the committee and and design authority for kind of a re reconsideration of the of the the landscaping. I'm I'm hearing that we would like to approve this and that the largest concern is the offering the most possible privacy to the good neighbors to the Southwest. And and to coming coming within the the code compliance of the buffering and landscape. And for those reasons, I I move accordingly.
I would second.
I've got a motion and a second. As far as clarification, let me ask the maker of the motion in a second, a couple of questions. One. Councilmember Jorgensen indicated or expressed concern regarding splitting the difference, meaning five feet on each side of a property line. The instances that that might work, I don't apply here. Did I get that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so on the remand, are you asking to come back with a ten foot landscape buffer? So that's a question to the maker of the motion.
I I believe on the remand, I would like I would like the planning and zoning to consider that as as a preference, but I I think we should have flexibility and deference, broad deference to to the commission. But that's my preference.
Okay, I'm just trying to, the remand needs to have some specificity. So I'm trying to, that's what I'm driving at here. It's part of the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, is it, did I, did I understand that correctly, that ten feet was the expectation in terms of these continuing discussions or that's the, that that was a hopeful outcome or an expectation that would would derive approval of the project?
In my opinion, I think that should be an expectation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Maybe I'm just, what's the distance from the fence line to the to the building? What's that setback? How many feet?
So we have a range, it's between ten and about fifteen or twelve.
Ten or about fifteen feet. So the edge of the fence to the building is ten feet to fifteen feet. Okay, so what they're saying is we want all ten of that feet to be fully landscaped, correct? Or did that have to move the building? I mean, I'm a little confused about, I guess, what's is it? What there is, what's being asked to be done? I'm a little confused as well.
But well, without slipping into the designing a project from the DAs, which we don't want to do, I think we challenge, if this is the direction you go, we challenge the applicant and you, you've got an area that's occupied by a pathway. Just, I'm looking at it. And
The reason I'm asking because in my mind, pathways landscaping. And so that that's where I'm a little, you know, that's when I was looking at that as a as as doing landscaping is my when you do a landscaping, it includes the path and either and then vegetation on either side of that.
And if it's thirty percent of the area or less, I guess you're right, Jen, am I right there? So seventy percent has to be stuff that grows.
Okay.
And thirty percent can be stuff that doesn't grow. Is that so?
If you're running, you can eliminate the path.
I can, I can see some ways to do it, frankly, but I don't want to get into the, I don't want to counsel the applicant on on this. That's just not, that's not our.
Mr. Mayor, that, that's why I asked about the difference between expectation and and consideration or or conversation. The, there, there are two perimeters that face the neighbor's property and is the distance between the fence on that other, is that ten feet as well or fifteen feet or? Or more? So I I would hope that we'd simply ask for that conversation to come up with a solution to the challenge.
Let's go ahead.
Do we have the the public testimony, the presentations that we could look at that?
Yes.
Send the comments, yeah.
Councilmember Jorgensen, were you looking for the one that the that the 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 two residents presented?
Yes.
Yes.
It's right at the end.
There was another one. The written testimony and the list of items from Mr. Zertz, forgive me if I kill your name. It shows up in that.
Is it something that's in the?
You have to go back to the
Council packet?
To the council packet. Yeah.
This is what I wanted to see, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get it. I'm looking at it right now on my iPad. So we'll go back to the council packet.
Do you have a page number for me for the council?
Well, when you pull up the, when you hit on the item, there'll be every document that's part of the application. So just click on the highlighted document on the agenda. So there you go. And go down toward the bottom. It's hard for me to read, but it'll have Mr. Zertz, you're going to have to help me pronounce that later, but it has is to now scroll down. There you go.
Share that really quick.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Uh huh.
What would you estimate the the horizontal distance to be on their property?
I think this says hundred and seventy-three feet, might remember.
I think that means the entirety of the property line, right?
Okay, well, it looks like sixty percent of that or so, I would guess, if you're asking me to do that.
And and that's, that's again, one of my concerns is if the majority of this, because I would concede that potentially the, you know, walking path would allow for some privacy. But the majority of this is approaching, you know, is is does not meet code. And when I look at if I'm to apply code to my property and I want to, for instance, put in a shed and code tells me my shed has to be fifteen feet off my back property. So it's not a nuisance it where I live, so it doesn't annoy the neighbors. I think that's fair and reasonable. And so I apply that logic to this concern.
I just think what I'm trying to drill down to if, and I'm not sure remand is the the perfect action. I'm going to ask Jen about that in a minute, but if we, we've got to have some direction in whatever we do. So if you want to send it back for somebody else to look at it, what do you want them? What do you want to achieve out of that? And if the discussion is from your point, as I understand it, council member, five feet on either side of the fence makes up the ten feet, but that's not going to happen in this case because you've got an established relatively new, if I understood the testimony right, residence. And there's not going to be an adjacent development to pick up the other five feet to create the ten feet of landscape buffer. So so if that's going to be on the applicant's side and you don't want to move the buildings, then you've got to allow the ten feet of landscape area that whether a narrow little path has to meander or meander through there or whatever it is. I don't know how big a tree you're going to put in a five foot area anyway. That's just, but I'm not trying to get there. So what I'm trying to do is is if we're trying to send a message to the applicant, we want to change something. You, you, you want to do that here? You want to send it off to somebody else to do? And then you've got to look at it again.
May. It seems to me like, you know, there's the spaces there, the ten feet or the fifteen feet from the fence. And so you can do a lot with landscaping, right? And you can have a path, you can not have a path, you can have staggered trees, you can, you can do different types of trees, we can do whatever we want. It's, it seems what I'm hearing from from councils, they really don't like the way the current landscaping looks, right? And so are we asking to reman what the landscaping looks in that ten to fifteen foot space? This, you know, you could landscape all ten feet of it, but grass and be code, but it still wouldn't give you any shading and trees and things like that. So it looks like what we want them to do is look at that space creatively, meet with some landscape architects, what they can do to really make that so chase it. Creates as much screening and barriers possible for the neighbors. And if it takes all ten feet from the fence to the building, we measure ten foot setback. Your landscape, you know, the fence to the building without moving the building. So I, it seems what you're asking for is a different look of what it, what the possibilities are for better landscaping. And I guess the question is, is do you need to see that now or the condition of a, you know, I don't know how that works. That would be a question for Jen.
Mr. Mayor, I I read that it was a condition approval.
Right.
And and the condition was to solve that issue, not for us to solve it, but for planning and zoning and cooperation with the applicants to solve it. There's a picture on page, maybe it's one eighty-four, one eighty-five, which illustrates the perimeter between the private property and the and the development proposed. So I'm I'm not at all suggesting a remedy. Except I would trust planning and zoning and the applicant to read that conditioned compliance carefully and use their expertise to accommodate the the needs of the neighbors as well as the the applicant.
But Councilmember Heller, your your recommendation is to the remand it to come up with a better landscaping plan.
Well, I I wouldn't use the term a better landscaping plan if one that resolves this this conflict over the code and and landscaping within the limits of the code.
But excuse me.
Mr. Mayor?
I want to, oh, sorry. I want to, oh, sorry, councilmember Page, I want to see if I'm tracking a little bit. The quite, and I I'm not fancy, so I'll use layman's terms. The the question is, do we kick it to the curb and let somebody else review this? Or are you suggesting that potentially we deny it with guidance on how to remedy it so it comes back?
I don't know that you have to deny it. Jenna, why don't you make your way up here? Because I'm going to get into procedural problems if I'm not careful. Maybe I can say this a different way, but the project's been spoken of complimentary, in a complimentary fashion by the council. The issue is this barrier, landscape issue between an existing residential's detached family on a large lot. And in the development, and we've been the owners of the residence argue that ten feet means ten feet. It doesn't mean five feet on their side and five feet on our side. If I'm not accurately telling the story, then you can raise your hand or something. But when I read the comments, it was ten feet's ten feet and don't count five of it on our property. That's reading between the lines is what I I said. So if the issue is ten feet on the applicant's side of landscaping, if that's the issue, and then that landscaping has to be approved at staff level, if that's what you want to do, then that's a condition you put on your approval. You don't have to remand it for that. Because all remanding does is to send it back down there to do what you're asking them to do here, and then it comes back here, and the applicant, in the meantime, sitting waiting another sixty days or whatever it is to get his decision. So so I'm I'm trying to dig out the the issue here. So if you can't have any buffer on the private residence side, then then logic tells me it's all got to be on the applicant's side. And we're trying to figure out what kind of trees and all of that. I I don't know that we want to get in there, but so the interpretation I'm asking you to make in this particular case, I guess, is does ten feet mean ten feet? That can be doable, or does it mean something else? And that's and I don't think you have sent it back by and zoning to make that decision. I think you tell the applicant what you want him to do in in general terms, and then if you want to have we have, Jenna, you interrupt me whenever it's appropriate, but we have landscape architect, the list of landscape architects, I believe, that we can consult on this, that staff could consult. So.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So I'm I'm curious of what would satisfy that. I mean, what do you, I mean, the the homeowners, not the.
Well, I I don't know that I want to get into that.
I didn't know if there's options, were they?
Well, I think.
Both sides of the fence.
I think they've made, I think they've made a you know, in their public testimony. There was a reference. I don't want to presume that they would. So are you suggesting that the developer landscape on both sides of the property line?
No, that's not, I'm not suggesting anything. I just, I just didn't know what.
Yeah, yeah, I.
I just want to satisfy.
That's getting too deep into, I think, what the the council ought to be dealing with. I think the decision. If you like everything else, then my question to the council is, is ten feet, ten feet? I mean, you you want a ten-foot buffer in the plain language of the code, regardless of how it was interpreted in some other circumstance, or if you do, then you can meet the you can meet the requirement of the plainly stated language in the code, and they still have to come up with a plan to comply as is currently the current language to meet the canopy and screening criteria over some reasonable period of time.
So then your question is, is that something that could just be worked out between staff and you?
It's just, yeah, it's a condition of approval, and if staff gets stuck, it comes back here, but I.
I don't know how the other council members do, but I would be comfortable having staff work with the applicant to come up with the the trust and then to come up with the a good solution.
Mr. Mayor, that's what I, that's how I interpreted that language in the compliance paragraph that 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 needs to be done. Although I understood council member Jorgensen's motion or on clarification was an ask for ten feet. So I would prefer that that the plain language of that compliance paragraph be followed through and and I I guess that puts me in the camp with council president Page in terms of remanding, but I don't even know if that's necessary. I I depend on the mayor's recommendation on that one.
You you can create a condition. And just you just you have the ability right now to say we approve this with a clarification of this condition or a new condition. I like that. And the new condition. I'm I'm sorry, I I keep throwing ten feet in your face, but that's to me, there's a lot of difference between the latitude you have and five feet and the latitude you have at ten feet. So
Councilmember Page was going to say something.
Oh, yes.
Do you have any comments, Councilmember Page, on your thoughts on how to do this?
I thank you. I I'm looking at the decision document, draft decision document, page eleven, it's red numbered for the packet, page one seventy-one. Garden City Code eight, six B dash two. Conditional use required findings. In order to approve this, the application meets the setback standard set forth in Garden City Code. And any deviations have been conditioned for compliance or waived as part of the planned unit development. My motion for remand was because I was not persuaded under the requirements for waiving this, that the that the hardship or the the condition that needs to be waived wasn't caused by the action of the applicant. If we were to look at the slide that Ms. Ayara prepared, there's, I I think there's some key language there that that I found, I I for one found very persuasive. The reason I chose in my motion to to go with a remand is because I don't personally, speaking for myself, don't believe that the spirit of of this, you know, is is ten is ten feet, you know, with a measuring tape. I believe the spirit of this that the neighbors are seeking is is some some privacy buffer that is greater than what is offered in this plan. And you know, as conditioned currently, I don't think it meets. It meets what we need to be doing to preserve the existing residents that are there, the existing use, and I don't, I agree with the mayor that it is outside our purview to solve this problem for for the applicant or to become creative in a way that that puts, you know, our names on on a design plan.
Okay. Councilmember Page, would you restate your motion?
One moment, please.
It's been a, it's been a few minutes, so I want to make sure we're all, and while you're doing that, Ms. Thornborough. Is there a procedural, is there a procedural recommendation or option, or what what do you?
Mayor, thank you. I think I think that the procedural has been vetted out in discussion, a remand, if it goes clear back to design review and then P and Z would certainly take. It it would be time consumptive, and then it would come back. But that's certainly an option that the council has if if the council thinks that it it should be vetted by both of those bodies. And then the the other proposal is to to condition this, and and staff would suggest that a a logical place for a condition would be prior to approval of construction plans, number four, where it deals with landscaping, that you could put any iteration of a condition in there requiring compliance with the ten-foot landscaping buffer. As the mayor has been trying to get to specificity, staff would also request, is that just around the the one piece of property? Is it on the north side as well, or is it just adjacent to their backyard? Or is is that intended to be for the entire perimeter landscaping? I do believe to Councilmember Heller's point, the the intent of that clarification discussion that Ms. Veal had in her report was discussing the canopy locations in in the entire perimeter landscaping. And so if it is a condition or or if it's a remand, either way, certainly for the applicant, not to speak for them, but just knowing people that are trying to get through projects, I suspect that they would prefer a condition of approval. But if that's something that council thinks really needs to go through and be vetted and go back through the hearing process, then a remand would be appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, Mr. Road?
Yes.
Is is the language then on on page one fifty-six, one fifty-seven, is is that sufficient in in your opinion to resolve this issue to the benefit of both parties?
Mayor, Councilmember Heller, and and no, I I believe that it needs to be in the the decision document. It can allude to that language, however you draft it, but I I do think that it does need to. If it's conditioned versus remanded, be a little bit more specific.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for a point of order? So two things from the legal side of the house. One, on page one fifty-seven of the packet uses uses the word deferred, D I F F E R E D to staff. I don't think that's the right word. So I mean, if we're going to make that, or if the council's going to make that a condition, I'd suggest you find a different word other than that word. Second thing is, I keep, I'm going back to Jenna using the word precedent. Now, I don't know if she means the legal definition of precedent, but if it's a legal definition precedent that she means, if it's been interpreted as five and five, and now you're saying we, I guess, saying that it was previously misinterpreted or something, that could cause problems in court. I mean, if Jenna's saying there's legal precedent of the five plus five, five on one property, five on the other side, denying on that basis would be problematic.
Equal treatment.
Right. Everybody needs to be treated the same in Garden City.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As to the motion I've made, which has been seconded, I I move to withdraw that motion at this time.
Okay, motion's withdrawn. The Well, maybe I'll try one more session. I just sit there.
Well, it's the idea of conditioning it, and then we just have to grab what that sounds like, a little bit of what Russ pulled out, you know, the way that was articulated, maybe we can get a little bit more specific in that one sentence.
You you can, if you if you go that route, then you're not asking the applicant to redesign the buildings or the layout. You're asking you're giving some authority to your staff. There may or may not be a pathway, listening to you, Councilmember Jacobs, there. There may be a narrow pathway that meanders through a ten-foot area with trees. I don't know what what it could be. But you're you're getting a ten-foot buffer. I never like to argue with the lawyer, but I'd like to sometimes. So I'm thinking on the on the precedent issue, I think one of the issues is you've got to be some presumption that it can be achieved. And you've got two, one, two mixed-use pieces next to each other, and eventually one's going to sell or develop, but the other one's, the way it's owned, blah, 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 is gonna be a while. That's one thing. You have an established property that isn't going to be redeveloped. It's barely newly constructed. There's been a significant investment there. And so the ten-foot, you can't it can't practically be applied there with any expectation that it could be achieved. And that's the problem that I have with with five and five on this particular circumstance. So I think there's the room there, condition it. Let let them come back with a plan for the staff to review. If the staff, for some reason, isn't comfortable, they have the ability to consult with professionals that we have authorized them to do. If that doesn't work, they can come back and say, how, what do you think about this council if they don't, if they get stuck? So that that's my suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, is your suggestion then refers to Councilwoman Jorgensen's I won't say expectation now, condition of ten feet being.
I think you need to have something specific so that the applicant has an expectation and the staff has an expectation of what they have to work with.
Does that satisfy the specificity that you're asking for, Jenna, if you're not asking for, but that that would make that a more workable document?
And Mayor, Councilmember Heller, understanding the ten-foot requirement, some of the specific specificity questions that staff has, and staff is assuming that that six-foot vegetation would need to be met in the specificity and particular areas of concern. If it's just, what would that be, the east side, or is it also the north side, or is it the entirety of the project? I think that the blurb in the staff report that's been addressed, not the decision document, but the staff report is looking at the entirety of the the perimeter landscaping. And so perhaps it is looking at the entirety, but any specific areas of concerns, if it is related to the one particular property and making sure that privacy is adhered to, moreover, in that location, or if it just needs to be the entire perimeter landscaping.
I think the discussion was that it would be the common boundary between single-family residential.
I agree.
Housing and limited to that area.
The surrounding properties are likely to be redeveloped in that five foot. Would have one.
Correct. Yeah.
Talking the boundary of this.
Yes, yes, yes. So so if the council is interested in going the condition route, then the condition would be that adjacent to single-family property common boundary Common boundary. At whatever the address was for. That the applicant provide. A ten-foot buffer. Landscape screening buffer, whatever that specific language is, Jenna, is there a reference, I should say?
Mayor. The specific code reference that we're looking at. Is eight, four, I, five. C.
Eight, four, I, five, B.
C.
Somebody write that down. Okay. So you'd be adding a condition. Under number four. That the landscape. Buffer. Between the residential property located.
Four thirteen East Forty.
Four thirteen East Forty, comply with section, whatever it was.
Eight dash four, I dash five, C.
Eight dash four. I. Dash C.
Five.
Five, C.
And Mayor, if I may, just for clarification, the full ten feet on the applicant's property, whereas the rest of the landscaping could split the difference.
Right. I'm not making, I can't make the motion. At any rate, that's something to reconsider. That's what I'm getting out of this conversation. Then the applicant move forward. They don't have to move any buildings. Hopefully, there's some relief to the neighbors and.
So, Mr. Mayor, the the motion would sound something like. I move to approve. This application, I'll get the correct number. Conditioned on. Compliance to code eight dash four, I dash five, C, on all common boundary, single-family. Residential property located at four thirteen East Forty.
So pick it, it was eight, four, whatever it is, pick up to ten feet.
It does, Mayor, it would, the difference would be for the rest of the perimeter landscaping and staff would assume.
Well, you've got the motion. Number.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve S U B F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two. The Carolyn Circle application conditioned upon. Compliance to code eight dash four, I dash five, C, maintaining a ten-foot perimeter. On the common boundary of the single-family residential property located at four thirteen East Forty.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just just one question, wait, as condition and including, is that right?
Additional condition, then.
Yeah, this is a new additional condition.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Yes, clarification. Maker, the motion is indicated for the record that this is an additional condition.
Yeah.
And a second.
The second, as I has concurred, okay.
So any further discussion on the motion? Here now. For call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Hey, yes.
All right, move on to item G four.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Sorry, let me sign out real quick. I apologize.
You get your stuff.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Yes.
You wore me out, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, item G four, this is resolution eleven forty-seven dash twenty-three. This is a resolution. Where the council will consent to the appointment of Garden City Police Lieutenant Corey Stanbaugh to the interim police. Interim. Police Chief of Garden City. Well, that works fine. Anyway, authorizing me to confirm the, I'm asking you to confirm the appointment. Of Corey Stanbaugh as our interim police chief.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move approval of that appointment.
And that is second.
Got a motion and second to approve resolution eleven forty-seven dash twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, can I just do a quick point of order? The other part of this resolution is that his appointment is only until the full-time chief is picked. And then his appointment just automatically.
Right, and that's in the language of the resolution. Yes, okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Good choice.
For call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Thank you. Lieutenant, now Chief Stanbaugh, you don't get a voice in this. Okay, we'll move on to item G five, resolution eleven forty-eight dash twenty-three. This is relating to surplus property. This is a routine matter. Any questions? Collins coming up here in case you have questions of stuff we need to get rid of.
I just had one question. The things that are wiped, like those iPads, are they reused then? Is that, or are they tossed to?
Mayor Evans, Councilmember Jacobs, they are not reused.
Okay.
Now, there's very little to no secondary market for used electronics such as these. They're pretty much end of life. A lot of the computers we can't give to libraries.
That's what I was thinking.
Like that, none of them want outdated electronics, so. Pretty much, unfortunately, they're. They're given to a recycler. Excuse me, who will? Take out whatever is valuable in there. There's always some gold beads, you know, and some of the on the. Chips and things like that, but it's a painstaking process that I don't think we want to.
I was just hoping they'd have some use with the libraries.
Yeah, I apologize, but at this point in time, there's not a useful. And all the PD stuff, all the hard drives are destroyed.
Right.
You know, so there's a lot of.
Thank you.
Mr. Sorry, Colin, do we shred the hard drives ourselves, or do we others do that?
Mayor.
We have a two-pound hammer in the.
Can I participate?
Jorgensen, that that pretty much, we destroyed them on site. There is a chain of custody that goes with these. Somebody watches them be destroyed. They're they're removed. Properly, so there is a chain of custody that goes through so that. Not somebody's just doing it out in the backyard. There are people witnessing it. They sign vouchers saying that they witnessed the destruction of these hard drives, especially the PD. The nature of. You know, what may still be on there.
Yeah.
Things just because they're white doesn't mean things are gone forever, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hey, it's a pleasure to counsel.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution one one four eight dash two three for the. Resolution relating to surplus property, the disposal of such property.
Second.
The motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Here now, for call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the business on our agenda for this evening. Nervating a motion to adjourn.
I still move.
Got a motion, do I have seconds? All in favor, say aye. All right. We stand adjourned, sorry.